Same to you, Alex. Good evening. Welcome to our 13th meeting of fiscal year 2017 of the Milton Planning Board. I'm Brian Furz, Chair. I'm going to ask my colleagues to introduce themselves, starting to my right.
I'm Alex Whiteside, member.
Michael Kelly, member.
William Clark, Planning Director.
Julia Gettner-Clark.
Tim Swirinski, planning director.
Cheryl Taggaias, member.
Okay, thank you. We're going to have a relatively light agenda tonight, though that doesn't necessarily mean we will go quickly. We have two public hearings, both of which are going to be continued. One is for Carrick Realty Trust's special permit for Central Avenue Plan Unit Development at 7:15. That will be continued to a date certain when we open it. And 7:30 also continued?
Yes. And just a quick on that. The Burke and DeSalle have just finished a rework of the stormwater management system for the property. They're sharing it with Lisa Eggleston for comment. So if we could schedule it for the 26th by a time certain, that would be great.
We'll talk to you at 7:30 for that quickly.
Thanks.
But that will be continued. So if you're here for either of those hearings, there will really be very little discussion on them tonight. We also have some old business. We have to talk about some signage. And we have a discussion on zoning articles. This will be the primary focus of our meeting tonight, which will be for the Ice House and the Carberry Estate. Quick item for the board on those two pieces. Those are under Old Business. We've heard a great deal of public testimony on both of those items. The board needs to deliberate on the two zoning articles that are before us. I'm interested in hearing my inclination, really, that we get through some significant deliberation tonight and try to move those things forward and probably not have public comment on those issues. I just wanted to make sure there were no objections from the board. Okay. So to the extent that there might be comments on those articles that haven't been submitted, we will have citizens speak in just a moment, so you're welcome to speak at that time on those two items, but we will be just deliberating.
Why not let them speak when we discuss them? Because we said this was a placeholder when we put them on, and it seems to me that the public should have a chance to look at the placeholder and give us some input before we try and finalize anything.
Okay.
It just seems to me that we had one public comment at the last meeting about whether or not the conservation commission should be...
And I know there were some comments from Mr. Walker's attorney, and I see he's in the room, so he may want to address us as well. So that's fine, we can do it at that time.
I think we should do it when we get to the articles.
Okay, no problem. All right, so we'll do it when we get to the articles. A couple of quick announcements. Our next meeting dates are January 26th, February 9th, and February 23rd. I believe meeting minutes were circulated for approval. I know they were. We have minutes for December 22nd. I know Cheryl sent around some comments.
I've got some additional comments, which I'll send around also. One thing that mystifies me, just totally mystifies me, is this quote on the last page that Mr. Clark relayed from the Board of Selectmen, some sort of a quote. For the life of me, I have no idea where that quote came from. I've attempted to work it into this thing, assuming that it is a quote, which I tend to doubt. But I would think that we could... You should consider, Cheryl, whether or not we might not dump the whole paragraph.
That's okay by me. I wasn't sure about that either, Alex, and that's why I changed what the vote was to reflect what I thought.
I think that we can just take out, from Mr. Clark relayed, to the end of the quote, just take the whole thing out.
Okay.
Because what we did was stated in the next line. I think the next line says it all, doesn't it?
The revised line that I sent around?
Yeah. Okay. Well, these are my comments. Do I give them to you?
I'll pass them down to Julia. I'm going to...
Take a look.
Cheryl's noted on here? Cheryl's are noted on here, perfect. All right.
Those are on top of Cheryl's.
Yep, great. That looks fine to me. Am I supposed to announce this, Tim, or is this just for the board? Okay.
Yes.
You got a copy, okay.
I'm pleased to see that this invitation is not at the power of market.
Quincy. All right, while we're waiting for Cheryl, is there anybody here who would like to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda for citizens' speaking?
Yes, sir. Just for point of order, I just wanted to make sure that what Mr. Whiteside asked will...
We are hearing public...
Right.
Yep, no problem. Anybody else? Okay. So we are going to move on to new business, because we can get that done in a short amount of time, I believe, since there's really nothing even listed here. I do have a couple of quick items. One is that we had a discussion with... I had a discussion with the Board of Selectmen, a member of the Board of Selectmen this week that has now been relayed to the Newtown Administrator, Michael Dennehy, regarding the potential idea of putting together a traffic study fund that would be created to allow the board to condition approval of certain applications upon a contribution to that fund in lieu of any sort of major mitigation to roadways. This is pretty common in other communities. I see it a lot in my own applications before the boards. Essentially, if there's no mitigation to be done, but there's obviously going to be a traffic impact because of increased traffic, there's an opportunity to have a contribution to this fund, which is then controlled by the Planning Board, and funds can be spent by the MPC, MPIC, Master Plan Implementation Committee, at the Planning Board's approval. Starts to help us figure out ways to do some of these studies. Wanted to mention it to the board, get the board's take, but I know I did speak to Mr. Clark about it. Mr. Clark and Mr. Dennehy were going to have a conversation about what the machinations of that might look like, and then come back to us with what form that might take before we have any sort of formal conversation about it. But I wanted to bring the board up to speed on that, and at least let them know that I had that conversation.
And how would this be funded?
It would be funded through special permits. If there was a special permit that the board believed was going to have traffic implications, but there was no obvious source of mitigation, it would be a contribution to the fund that would allow us to then further study traffic. I can give you some examples.
Right now, we can say we want a traffic study, and/or I think we can say we want our independent person to do the traffic, and you have to pay for them.
This is a little different. This would be... Go ahead.
I was just going to comment that, for example, if it... I think what you're getting at is an example where, let's say, signalization improvement might be a mitigation factor, or offsites or down blocks, that funding of that improvement could come from that fund, is that right?
Potentially. I mean, I think Newton has a fund like this, Framing has a fund like this, I can probably find a bunch of other communities that do as well. Essentially, if you're... I'm going to use the Carberry proposal that we've been looking at. If there was no obvious mitigation, but you're obviously bringing cars to a roadway that's already busy, there's no obvious way to mitigate that. As a concession to the town and a nod to the fact that there's going to be traffic created, they make a contribution to this fund, which then Master Plan Implementation Committee can say, "We need to do a roadway study network, a study of our roadway network. We need to fund that study." This could then be a fund that's used to do those studies in the future.
Would it just be used for studies or for actual improvements as well?
Again, I'm not proposing specific machinations. I've asked for Mr. Clark and Mr. Dennehy to come up with some ideas of how we could do something like this and get some examples from other communities.
But this is just a heads up.
This is just a heads up. I didn't want anybody to hear about it and wonder why we hadn't brought it up to the board, so that's what it is. Not asking for any sort of votes tonight, for sure.
What do you think, Mike?
Fine.
So we could approve them as amended.
All right, that sounds great. Want to make that motion?
No. Approve them as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. A few more minutes before we can get to our first public hearing. Mr. Clark, or Mr. Swirinski, do you have any other new business that you'd like us to attend to?
No, I think after this hearing is continued, you should... Might be a good idea to just bang out the 37 Central Avenue site plan approval.
That's where I'm going right now, and we will delay the 7:15 until we get done with the sign. So we're going to move on to this old business for sign 37 Central Avenue Site Plan Approval.
Did we already approve this?
We approved it, you didn't sign it.
I was asked to prepare a decision for the board, which I provided to Tim several weeks ago, and I think it's substantially in the form that Tim's provided.
Tim wanted to just quickly report this for us.
Is it in our packet?
It was in your materials.
Does it conform with what we discussed? I guess is what I'm kind of looking for you to tell us. We've read it, but...
Didn't we say that these plans look okay?
We did.
Okay.
And this says that they're supposed to do it in accordance with the plans.
All right, I guess we're good.
Sort of says that. Says it close enough.
Do you want the signature pages off of here?
We need three, of course, three. I only have black.
I have some blank signature pages and a blue pen.
Ah, you're prepared. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
And so I would suggest that, just to be clear, at the end of the paragraphs, it says, "During construction, apten..." And we can sign the thing because we've applied, it's a one-page deal. "Apten shall install a silt barrier to manage the flow of stormwater," and then we say, "all in accordance with the plans." If the silt barrier is on the plans.
I can't remember whether it is or not. I think in the written materials, we certainly suggested a silt. I got one, I found one, thank you.
Mike, do you need the blue?
I think I have one, thank you, Cheryl. Guess I do. Nope, that was blue.
Well, then, why don't we say it right after the word "property" in the previous sentence? "All in accordance with the plans." So "property," Tim?
Yep.
"All in accordance with the plans." Period.
So after "property" in the second sentence?
And then take out the final... The remainder of this page is intentionally left blank because the page is pretty full. And we might need that line. But with those two changes, I think it's fine.
Two changes, so "in accordance with the plan" at the end of both?
"All in accordance with the plan."
"All in accordance with the plans" at the end of the sentence that starts "roof area will replace..."
Right, it's a separate sentence. I understand it isn't... It isn't a full sentence, but it conveys the idea.
I'm going to read the text that you want.
And put in the periods.
Okay. "Roof area will replace pavement, but there will be no net change to the area of impervious surface on the property."
Period.
Period.
"All," with a capital A, "in accordance with the plans."
We can't just...
"All construction shall be in accordance with the plans."
And then is there another change at the end of the last sentence?
I would just take out the final... The remainder of this page is intentionally left blank because...
Yep. Got it.
And with that, I'd move that we execute this in accordance with our vote to approve the site plan approval.
As amended.
Or to grant site plan approval.
Give me a second, Mike.
A second? Oh, I thought it was already approved.
I thought it was too. We'll vote anyway. All in favor?
Aye.
Here's your signature pages. Those are three copies, please. I'm going to open the 7:15 public hearing... Yeah, I'm going to do that anyway. Open the 7:15 public hearing. Carrick Realty Trust Special Permit for Central Avenue Plan Unit Development, 131 Elliott Street, continued from December 8th. Tim, what's our December 20... Excuse me, January 26th agenda look like?
I forgot to print out my next meeting's agenda. I do know that we continued Pulte to the 26th. I believe it was at 7:15. You could play it safe and continue this to 7:20.
What else have we got off the top of your head?
Highland Street that way.
We will, in a minute.
We will. Highland Street will be that night?
There's some other new business that's going to be on the agenda, but no public hearings.
And we'll still have these two zoning articles. I'm just trying to be respectful of our getting things done. We're going to have two that we have to postpone tonight. This one has a deadline on it, for sure, so we've got to... So this one will go until 7:20, you want it to be? So can I have a motion to continue the public hearing to January 26th at 7:20 PM?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right. I think unless anybody has anything else, we can just dig in, because I can't open this public hearing until 7:30. We'll have to open it when we get to 7:30 and then close it. So we will start with Ice House.
Okay, I will be across the hall.
Oh, right.
Maybe we should...
Why don't we do the other one first?
Okay.
Then you don't have to sit down.
Then you can go home.
I forgot about that.
Okay, great.
That makes a lot more sense. So we're going to start with Carberry.
All right.
Be respectful of our colleague here. Tim, you want to give us a quick introduction of where we are, and then we'll jump in?
So at the last Planning Board meeting, you all voted... Sorry, I'm just trying to bring this up. Oh, God, sorry. To... I was getting a little confused.
It's all in the minutes.
It is all in the minutes. To approve a draft of zoning language for the Great Estate Plan Unit Development article to submit to the Selectmen for inclusion on the warrant. That article was due on January 5th, so you all have that in your packets. Alex has made some edits that we'll be putting up on the screen when I have a minute to get it up there.
I gave you my only written copy of the zoning.
You want it back?
Yep.
Thank you.
So that's where we are. We've also... We've heard from some residents, some abutters, and some representatives of those abutters. Some of them are here. So, yeah.
All right. So why don't we get the stuff up on the board, and if Alex has some changes he'd like to propose, I think we should pass the baton.
Are we going to go page by page?
I think we're probably going to, yes.
The way I review these things is that we do changes, we make the changes, I reread it, and I can say, "This doesn't work," and change it all over again. So putting it up on the board and getting a consensus tonight means nothing to me, because when I read it, if it needs to be changed, I'll suggest further changes. So don't get too excited about perfection, because I don't regard it as such. But perfection is good, if you can attain it.
Yeah, I think we'll all be expecting to make additional changes after the fact. I don't think anyone expects to vote tonight, but you never know. Okay, are we ready, Tim?
Yeah, it's up there. I've made as big as I can.
Maybe I could just run through these things briefly, and then we can discuss. I mean, we've got another group of changes from Mr. Walker's attorney, Mr. Connors, which...
Do you want to do it second or first?
What?
Second or first?
Should we do them paragraph by paragraph? So if they're... Like Alex doesn't have changes in paragraph one, "but," Mr. Connor?
No, I think we need to do the public separate from us.
Okay. All right, fine. So...
I just don't think it's... We're really close enough to be wordsmithing. I think if we get the... If we know what we want and make it clear, I mean, just initially, I'd say this to indicate the intent.
Whose revisions are in red on the screen? Why don't you like... You just stated a minute ago, why don't we just go through those, rather?
Okay, so just another suggestion.
It's ridiculous.
Like, I don't have specific edits like that. I have more sort of comments or concerns.
Exactly.
So when we get to those, we will not only discuss your specific edits, but my concerns and questions?
Oh, and anything else that comes up. I just want to run through these things, and as I say, this was a first pass, and I never am satisfied with the first pass, so it may be that I'll have a problem with the definition when I think about it a little more. But you can see that in paragraph two, I just put in the word "certain" because it makes more sense. In paragraph three, I took out "three" just because it doesn't seem to... It seems to me that that's too restrictive, the combination of lot lines adjoining the DCR. I have a concern about spot zoning. I know that some people say there is no such thing as spot zoning if you have a PUD, but I'm not sure that that's true, and I've never seen any legal authority to that effect. So I don't... There's no reason to put in that the lot line, the combination of lot lines, at least equivalent to the frontage.
That makes me very happy. Getting pretty specific there.
And number six.
Reasonable to me.
And number six. Number six. I just suggest, let's put in 58. Maximum number of units in these developments is 58, and not worry about units per acre.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
If we arrive at a...
I'm not a the chairman, actually.
Who's talking to you, I get it.
If you arrive at a point that is significant and perhaps needs some debate...
We'll give you a chance to talk, and then we can debate it while you're up here. Let us get through one, and then we'll talk to you. So 58 is your proposal?
And this is because six units can be... Will be either produced off-site, or money will be given to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the units, or you know.
No, but by saying... So that would allow us... That allows the applicant to not have to build them here ever, meaning the option is off-site or contribution.
What it... I mean, if it's... If they do them onsite, it will be part of the 58. If they do them off-site, it'll be in addition to the 58.
And they get 6 to 4, right.
So there's a strong incentive for them to do them off-site or pay the dough. And the dough, of course, is important for us to be fairly specific about. In number seven, I say, "The open land should be suitably maintained." I know that the Lowe's estate has open land, and we've had all kinds of complaints, saying they're all fallen-down trees and, you know, hardy... What is it, hardy? What is that invasive species? In any event, it's a wreck, and the Lowe's estate doesn't maintain the open land. So it has to be... It isn't going to be just left to, you know, have all the ash trees die and have a lot of dead trees. It's meant to...
Now, I have a comment on this one in the setbacks. Where the site plan has the roadway next to the buffer line, it doesn't say that the roadway cannot be in that buffer.
Well, maybe it should.
Exactly.
Can you repeat that, Cheryl?
The roadway is on the plan, is at the perimeter of the housing, so... But the language doesn't say that that roadway cannot be in the setback.
So you'd be saying, "No new building," or roadway?
No, the main roadway will have to cross through it, through the setback on the street, you know, otherwise you wouldn't be able to get there.
Right.
But it's really more around the perimeter.
So side and rear setbacks?
Well, you're just saying that the roadway should be in the setback areas.
Except it has to cross the...
Except for the access, right? Access points, right?
No building or roadway.
And this gets to a point that I'd like to make, in that there's nothing in this zoning that requires that. And this goes back to something that Ned offered earlier on, that the developer can say, "If you pass this zoning by contract, saying, 'This is what I'll build,' so that we will know that if this zoning occurs, this is what..."
This is the development agreement?
This is a development agreement, yeah. And that, I think, is people will want, since this zoning doesn't guarantee this plan. And if we work out a plan and then it isn't produced, that's not so good.
Do you want to allow the land to be landscaped up to Canton Ave?
Well, landscaped in the sense that you don't want dead trees.
Well, then, I think you might want to say, "Suitably maintained in their natural condition," period.
It addresses that later, Mike, on 11.
I mean, the whole thing I've been hearing people say, they want the frontage to appear the same on Canton Ave, you don't want to have...
So it says "as here and after provided."
We're going to have a landscape plan, though, and there is going to be stuff in the landscape plan that... I mean, it isn't going to be exactly what we've got now. And as things die, they should be replaced, and it's like I just said, if all the ash trees die, they're going to get cut down, they're going to get replaced. I don't know if there are ash trees, but there may be a few left. But, I mean, that's something that we can, I get your point. And it is, that's wordsmithing. Making it, making it clear that we want the landscape plan to show what we're going to get, and, and then say it. That what is shown is what we get.
And even to your point, Brian, if it says it differently here at 11, then it's just contradicting itself, isn't it?
So, what it should probably say, I'm just trying to go to 7 and 11 here. 11 defines what open land is. So, you could suggest that all, no, I'm sorry. You're right, Mike, because open land is defining all of the improved areas inside, and, and, so you're right, all of the setback areas shall be left in their natural condition other than maintenance. I think we take out our landscape as hereafter provided, because the setback areas are supposed to be left alone.
Except that there are some structures to be demolished, and that will require some landscaping in those areas.
Are they within 200 feet of the...
Yeah, they're right on the...
On this side here.
Okay, that's a good point.
They're within the setback in that area?
Well, the other, the other thing is, the deer have done a job on the undergrowth. I mean, whenever anything tries to grow, the deer come and eat it. And so, what once was, no longer is. And it, it may be that some landscaping, some thoughtful landscaping, some Olmsted-type landscaping, is going to actually improve this site.
Yeah, that's fair.
I just, and I don't want to make the same point over and over, but I don't know how many people get up and said they, one of the major things they wanted to see was the parents from Canton Ave to remain the same.
I understand, but that doesn't, the same on the back.
No, no, but, you know.
We can say that the front appearance, or big fields in the front should continue to be big fields.
I would think even people that walk the trails that we've discussed in the Blue Hills would want the back to stay, the buffer to stay.
I would think that they would want more undergrowth, so they wouldn't have to see the houses.
So, this will be, subject to review, when the application of the special permit, right?
Yeah, we just have to make sure that this language properly guides the applicant and properly allows the board to demand certain things.
This language will be the bylaw.
This is the bylaw.
Right. So, if it says, I can landscape the open space, the buffers or the frontage, then I can landscape the frontage.
Would it make sense to say "or maintained" as hereafter provided? Because the open land segments talk about maintaining, maintaining natural appearance.
Well, it says it in the opposite. It says suitably maintained in the natural condition.
But what about something like limited replacement landscape, or something like that?
I think suitably maintained indicates that. A tree falls down, I'll put a tree up. Suitably maintained.
But to Alex's point, though, if an abutter suggested that it had been cleared out, such by deer or whatever, death, you know, things, landscape materials that died, would this prohibit people from actually putting in landscape? I'm just...
I, I just...
To be a buffer?
I'm somewhat confused with the concern, because I've been driving up and down that street for 25 years, and I haven't seen much maintenance or landscape that go on there, and it looks the same to me.
I'm just, I was thinking more about the abutting properties, if they, if it was actually desirable to have something which served as a visual, but...
Well, some of those Norway maples along Canton Ave are, could be considered targets.
Well, I guess the question is, if somebody in the future wanted to put landscaping in there at the request of one of their neighbors, would they have to come back to the planning board in order to be able to do it?
Yeah, I think, again, I thought the whole concept of this setback and/or buffer was to leave it natural. So, I don't, I don't understand whether the landscape keeps coming up. I think the landscape is opening up a door. I mean, I don't think anybody wants to see a 46-acre site up there that looks like a new golf course or something completely cleared. It looks beautiful, it's landscape.
Looks like something that Olmsted created.
Right.
Rather, you'd rather have the shrublands that Olmsted turned into some great, great, I mean, this at one point...
It looks like Olmsted today.
Well, it was landscaped at one point. And, you know, landscaping is not a bad thing. It's a good thing.
Depends on what you're looking for.
Well, you know, if you have a talented landscape architect at work, they're not going to, you know, make a hash of it. Especially when it's subject to approval.
I'm apparently confused by all the discussion that's going on, because that's not what I've been hearing.
Well, that's not what I've heard. So...
So, let's, let's look at that.
In any event, that's, that's a, that's something that needs to be resolved, but...
Okay, well, let's...
So, it's an open item?
Let's make a note of that.
Yeah, open issue.
Landscaping, question mark.
There's putting green, it'd look nice out there. It's landscaped?
What?
So, it may be a nice putting green along the...
Well, it says we can make them open to the, it says we can have it open to public access, so...
I don't think that, I don't think golf courses are permitted in the open land, but, and they shouldn't pay. Okay. The setbacks, I'd say 58 units in six. And seven, seven has to do, there's some landscaping language there that has to be looked at. In eight, these buildable pods, I, what it says is that a buildable pod is a building. Why, if a buildable pod is a building, don't we scrub the term "buildable pod," and if necessary, use the word "building"? So, I say, no unit shall be erected or maintained, except, or new unit shall be erected and maintained in a building containing not more than three attached townhouse units. And then I mention that there are going to be some condominium units. One of the problems we have here, if you look at it, is that the language throughout uses townhouse units, but they're not all townhouse units. There are a number of condominium units as well. So, using townhouse units as though all the units were going to be townhouse units is not correct.
What are you, what are you using as the definition of condominium unit? Just a single unit, single floors condominium unit?
No, in the houses.
In the existing structures.
In the existing structures, they're going to be condominiums. But they're not townhouses.
Right.
So, we should be clear there, and just call them units. You don't have to call them townhouse units, just call them units. And as I say, I don't think that we need a definition of buildable pods. I've been through this, and I don't see that buildable pods ever becomes an important concept. Affordable housing, I have struck the provision for a greater state BUD containing less than 10 house, 10 townhouse units, because it's not going to happen. Let's just focus on the 10 or more, and the 10%.
So, you're just, so get rid of containing 10 or more townhouse units, is what you're saying?
Less than, he's getting rid of the...
Less than 10. And then, we have the three options for the affordable housing, otherwise, that can be constructed or rehabilitated as part of the development. That would mean they'd be part of the 58. They can be constructed or relocated on another locus within the town. And we should say, we should say that this, you know, they're not, they don't have to take six away from the 58 if they do it that way. They get six more. And what I see them doing is buying, and you'll see also that I say that needs to be a maximum resident preference for the units. And what I have in mind is resident town employee preference.
Good.
For these units, because what I have in mind is that a couple of, the developer could apply, could acquire some two-family houses, bring them entirely up to code, they don't have to be, just buy them. And, and then make them available for town residents, town employees, to the maximum extent possible. And I think that they can all, it can be 100% resident preference, because my view is that resident preference is a, is directed at making sure that there is minority participation in the pool of applicants. In other words, if you have an all-white community, and you have 100% resident preference, then your applicants are going to be all-white. But Milton has a good diversity, and I don't think that we need to beef up the pool, because we're already, I think we can have 100% resident preference. And again, it would be, it would be ownership housing, and it would be something that town employees and younger town households would be able to afford.
Brian, do you want to open up the 7:30 hearing real quick?
Sure, thanks. Quickly, we'll open up the 7:30 hearing for Dennis and Martha Burke, special permit for cluster development, 245 Highland Street, which was continued from December 8. Corcoran, do you have anything?
We just asked it to be continued. Quick comment, the DeSelen Burke have just finished a redesign of the stormwater management system in response to comments that we had received from the town's consulting engineer. I think that those comments are, the redesign is on its way to Ms. Eggleston for her further review. And so, I'd ask the board to continue it to the 26th, in order for that review to take place, and for us to deliver copies of new plans to the board by the end of next week.
Okay. Engineer, is there a, any chance February 9 works for you?
I'd like to shoot for the 26th, in case the other two hearings get continued. And I think...
It's a fair comment. That's fine.
Okay.
We'll put it in at 7:40? We don't know if we have a 7:30?
We have a...
We're not, 7:25. Well, we could do 7:25.
We have a 7:15, I checked when I was upstairs. We have 7:15 is Polte, 7:20 is 131 Elliott. That's it for public hearings.
All right, so we can do 7:20, we can do 7:25, that's fine.
That's great, thank you.
7:25?
Yeah. Can I get that moved?
So, is...
Can I get that moved?
Oh, sorry, so moved.
And second?
I got it.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you, okay. Go back to where we were.
Back on the affordability and the 100% for the town residents. I have no problem with that, as long as that passes muster with legal...
You'll, you'll see that I say that...
Place of the maximum allowed.
The, the maximum town resident, town employee preference allowed by applicable law shall be employed in selection of buyers for the affordable unit. I just think that it can be 100%, but it...
Yeah.
It may not be, it may be...
My question here, sorry, Brian?
Go ahead.
My question here has to do with where the offsite would be located, and will we have review of that?
I think we should.
I think so, too.
I agree.
I think, and, and that was something I, we, we'll do a section on that.
Okay.
The other point I wanted to make is, you know, typically, the affordable units are designed in a way that they're comparable, and they're not distinct. So, I'm not, certainly not suggesting that we're going to have a 3,300 square foot condominium unit in a neighborhood where it's not appropriate, but maybe they need to be designed to be comparable to the surrounding homes in the street, or...
Well, comparable with their setting.
With their setting, right. That's what I was trying to get to.
I assume that they're going to probably buy two-family houses.
Yep.
Make them, bring them entirely up to code, and sell them to...
And comparable to the, to the setting, okay.
Town residents, town employees.
Remember that the, the ones on site are going to be age-restricted, and as such, they're going to be designed to have an option for first-floor living, which the, the new ones may not be...
I don't want them to necessarily be like that, that development.
Right.
But they need to be seamless with the surrounding environments.
That makes sense.
And they will be ownership. So that will be seamless, I think. It can be seamless.
We need to talk about the cash?
I think that we should think about, I haven't, I, I mean, I say, an amount of cash sufficient to prevent development or purchase of the requisite number of units offsite.
Okay, that gives you some, that gives you some nice leeway to figure it out later. It's a good punt.
I mean, how do we figure it out?
No, I think it's a great, it's a great solution. I think it's good.
Under 10, the big thing is that where it says each townhouse unit shall have an attached one- or two-car garage, I've added a proviso, provided that garage doors shall not dominate the appearance of the unit as seen from the street.
That's good. Does it say they must have, or they may have?
Shall have, is what they say.
Do we want it to be "shall"?
Well, they need cars.
Right.
They need a garage.
But could they be detached?
They don't want it, that's not their, well, I mean, we could say attached or detached. But then, of course, then we'd have these garages floating around.
And now you got to go back to building pods, because where are you going to put them?
Well, my feeling is, after looking at Woodmere, that the dominance of the plan, you know, with the garages facing the street, if you say "shall," you restrict your design flexibility, that's all.
Woodmere is an orientation problem. They have every single garage facing the main roadway going in.
So did these.
Right, so they're going to have to figure it out, right.
But when you say that you shall have that garage...
If you look at the side of the buildings in Woodmere that are facing Brushell Road, they're very nice. So, they need to figure out how to orient them on a varied basis.
In other words, you're saying they can, in fact, make them so the garage doors don't dominate?
I, I think so, yeah. I think if they, they're creative, they should be able to do it, whether it's how they orient the building, or, you know, they can have one, a couple of buildings where the garage is on the front, but maybe if you wouldn't have to, the building has to be turned at an angle.
There's probably too many buildings to, is separate garages is a, is a...
You're going to end up with a, you're going to end up with a preponderance of garage doors, and that, you're going to end up with a stable of cars, is what you're going to end up with, detached, kind of what they do with the Avalon Building, it's just a long garage building with a bunch of doors.
No, that's not what I had in mind.
I know.
But this is also no different than Woodmere in terms of layout right now. If you drive this road, all you will see are garage doors.
Well, but you can't, because the zoning would forbid it.
So, they have to change the plan, as part of the application? Or figure out a different design? One of the, it's up to them, but I think it accomplishes it.
I just think, I still think it should allow some flexibility.
As far as whether you can do detached?
Yes.
So...
May instead of "shall."
I'm just trying to figure if that complicates it with building pads, but, building pods, but I guess it probably doesn't.
Well, the building pods have, you have to remember are defined as buildings, not areas. I mean, if there were, if the exclusive living area were a part of the pod, which is not in this definition, then...
Okay, we're all, yeah, yeah, and there's no restriction to number, okay, I'm okay with what you're proposing.
With what?
With saying attached or, or attached.
If they detach, you're going to consume a lot more space. You're going to have a lot less open space, and you don't have to, I mean, what's, what's the option?
They're required to have a...
You're already, you're already pretty, they've already reduced the open space.
I mean, they're not going to want to do it that way. It's more, it's a lot more expensive to do it that way.
I don't think that they should do it that way. We don't want a whole lot of buildings.
I don't want a unit in this area of the world with my garage detached anyways, if I don't have to.
These are old people like me.
They want to be able to walk right inside.
Especially at this time of year.
Keep warm, have the car warm.
Your call, it's your call, Cheryl. You can always raise it again later.
Over 55, and I'm in the category.
All right.
And can we just go back to the...
The pods?
No, no. The... The, on the affordable housing, just on the cash, Alex.
Yeah.
Permit development or purchase. I want to make sure that we have enough money to purchase and bring it up to code, as you just said. So as we're looking at the language, just purchase and/or develop or renovate or whatever.
Purchase code bill or bring to code.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay. 11, the open land. We've discussed sort of the open land.
Well.
And it needs to be, it needs to be.
Again, similar to Pulte, I'm concerned about how much is allowed in the open space, back to what Mike was saying earlier.
I, I don't think anybody has a definition of landscape, so I think you, when you say landscape, it's.
Well, that question we've already left is an open item. Yeah, we left that as an open.
I mean, we know what the landscape is. Any proposal for the landscape would have to be shown.
A limited number of small shares needed for the operations may be permitted, but should also be shown on the plan and approved, right?
Yeah. I mean, that's what the next sentence says.
Yep, okay. Yep, okay.
But I, the open land is this, 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 we've got to, we've got to think about this and see if we can't bring the open land to a consensus here.
Yeah, I mean, so for example, the temporary retention of storm drainage, I mean, that would necessitate removal of trees. So I think we do have to think about how this is worded such that there's as minimal loss of tree as possible.
Right, because it might be like those basins.
Right. I'm assuming there would be.
I suppose there would be.
I just think when you keep saying it's left in its natural state, I think the point about maintenance is enough. I don't, I don't think the term landscape is. I mean, you say there's a landscape plan, but the sentence is really reading that this is the future for forever, that they can leave it in its natural state and landscape it. You might have a landscape plan, but five years from now, someone might decide to clear it and put all grass there.
Well, no, they can't because the landscape plan is in effect forever unless the planning board.
Quantifies it.
Determines it's not.
And that's what they, that's what they ran into it at the pine, what's the?
Home Inc.
Home Inc., where they had to come in and start getting approval for every.
Well, that's what they said.
So they were, well, I understand.
They came in once.
I understand, but that's the, that's the, that's the underlying idea, right? They have to, they have to get permission to change the plan.
If there were a fire and all the landscape burned up.
That's natural.
Then.
That's the natural state.
That would be the natural, that, we.
Without any undergrowth, that might happen.
We got to have some flexibility and I.
Well, let's defer that point.
I just think.
I think we need to spend some time on that.
Isn't this beautiful, like people say about certain entrances and stuff now they're made, they almost look commercial.
Well, they don't have to look commercial.
On the number of, this parking for the DCR land, the way it's written now, it could be abused. I think it needs to be, I would, I would recommend that any parking that's allowed in the open land is dedicated, not made available, but it's dedicated to, that, to people that are trying to access the DCR land.
Right, okay, and dedicated, dedicated. Yeah, I, I mean, I, this idea was, it needs a little work. The condo association, I looked at it and I haven't compared it with our other, our other things and it, it probably needs a little bit of work. And. I don't have too much more. On 13, you can see I have the garage doors language. Mentioned something about smaller accessory buildings.
Can we encourage, can we encourage dormers and/or gables as well?
Encourage what?
Dormers and/or gables.
Yeah.
To break up the planes, so we're allowing them. I think we should encourage them.
Is that what they're going to do?
Well, it's in here that dormers and/or gables will, which break the planes of the roof should be used. Oh, it says should.
I mean, do we have, is that their model?
There are dormers on the buildings in Woodmere.
All right. Gables? Did you say dormers and gables?
They've got it in here as number 13A6 and it actually does say should, so I guess it is already encouraged.
I mean, if these, these things need, need work, Cheryl, feel free, you probably have done it all already, but.
You're into, you're putting your comments in as we go here, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it should be used where appropriate is a good way to phrase it.
It's efficient, I agree.
Yeah. You could say are encouraged also if you want to.
No, I think should, I think should accomplishes it.
Okay. The one thing that I was thinking when it's talking about building materials being of high quality, I've seen in instances, like in, you know, like in design standards where certain materials are prohibited. So for example, one could prohibit things like vinyl or aluminum siding. I don't know how the board feels about thinking like that. The board doesn't have any.
I'm sorry, Cheryl, could you say?
Fine about eliminating those.
Yeah, I'm, I'm suggesting that instead of saying just that.
Vinyl and.
High materials, quality materials, we could also say certain materials are prohibited.
Which ones would you prohibit?
Well, for example.
Obviously vinyl and aluminum siding, I agree.
Why don't we see what it looks like? Not the siding, but the provision.
Okay, I think that's a good idea as long as we don't restrict. Then it could look good.
In 14, I haven't done a great deal about the site plan. I haven't done a great deal about the rest of the.
I grew up in a house with aluminum siding and I turned out just fine.
Do you like it? My house actually has aluminum siding and I love it.
Hose it right off, no paint needed.
There are other quality materials available.
Jealous.
It's pretty nice.
I'm not going to go to bat too much for aluminum siding, that's fine.
Obviously, yeah.
All right, on the site plan, do we, have we required that the site plan show which existing structures are going to be demolished and which are going to be retained and which stone walls are going to be? These are notes off to the side that I have here, so.
Well, I mean, if you look at three, major site purchase, major site features, including buildings, any proposed removal or changes in these features have to be shown. So it's, it's there.
But is, but is the. Major site features, I mean, should we just say all structures and major site features?
You want to say any buildings?
Yeah, because.
And any buildings.
What constitutes a major building versus a minor building?
All right, okay.
It doesn't say major buildings. It said, a building.
But it says major site features.
But maybe.
Right, but a building is a major site feature in the same way that a stone wall is and a meadow is and a rock ridge is. I mean, I.
It's not by its size, it's just a building.
So what I would do is all structures and then it's major trees and wooded areas.
But a stone wall is a structure, I.
Exactly, a stone wall is. But what you're trying to say major for is really things like the landscape elements, like a large tree or wooded area or a rock.
Why not just take out the word major?
There you go. So I, again, as I've said before, would like a requirement that a submission requirement be a three-dimensional physical model or and/or renderings from multiple vantage points as well as site sections showing the existing topography and the new topography juxtaposed against one another. These are things that we requested along the way on other projects, but I'd like to be explicit.
This is for the whole site? In other words, a little, little thing of the whole site?
I think printing is such a great invention now. It's easy to, to model that site.
In other words, you think this can be done without breaking the bank?
Yes, I am.
Okay, why not write, write it up?
Okay, I'll write it up for you. And one other thing is just photographs of the existing conditions, particularly the structures and the landscape features. Should be part of the submission.
Is there any going back to?
Also.
I'm sorry, you still go?
Oh, just on the photos. I was also wondering whether there would want to be some kind of historic documentation of the property before any demolition.
What I was about to say kind of tended to that. Are we, is there really any requirement to maintain the existing buildings?
No.
I thought there was.
If you look at 13B, it talks about it, but it doesn't really say that that's a must.
They'll mandate it?
Well, it says it shall be converted.
This is, this is why I'm suggesting we need a development agreement because it doesn't, I mean, it could be gone.
Well, it says shall be converted.
But what if you, what if you demo it?
If it's existing, it shall be converted, but it.
If you demolish it before the application.
Aha. Your demolition?
Well, I mean, that's, that's not, you have to have a development agreement. There's no way you can.
Okay.
Can't you put something about approval of demolition of any existing site buildings?
I think that when they come in with the plan, they can't, they can't change it until they get approval, once they come in with the plan.
Well, they could buy the land and go buy, go pull a demo permit.
Well, I have to say that.
Get a demolition delay and pull buildings down.
Once they do their, once they have their application in, they're.
Then I agree, then they're locked, I agree. But you can't, there's not much you can do to prevent it ahead of time.
Of course, if they tear it all down, they might not get approval.
Well, what you could say is that this is a great, no, you can say. This is a great estates bylaw. It only applies on, you could make that a condition in the beginning, in the, in the beginning on, and take out, take out number three, as Alex suggested, and say that the property has to have, you know, a minimum of two or three historic structures.
Well, there are at least two single-family dwellings constructed before 1900 containing at least.
Right.
Square feet.
Great, yeah, then they can't decimate.
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
Yep.
What is the intention now to maintain just two of the buildings?
Two.
What's the, what was the language, Alex, that you wanted to put in there?
Well, it's containing at least and we're going to look and see what they contain and take the lesser of those numbers.
Yep.
I mean, number four in the purpose is.
Right, that's, that's what we're talking about, Tim.
But there's nothing there, the way it says it right now, Tim, that says you have to keep them. To Brian's point, somebody could buy the land, take all the.
Well, no, there is inciting.
Somebody could buy the land, take all the structures down.
Yeah, the way I read it, if I have a house, I turn it into.
You can't.
But if I don't have it, because I took it down, then I don't.
This only applies if there are two homes. This, this zoning doesn't work if the two buildings aren't there.
So two small houses.
No, two buildings constructed before 1900 containing at least X number of square feet. You can't rebuild them.
That should do it.
Yep.
But to your point, I thought you were leading to is if somebody came in here with a piece of land that met everything else here, except it doesn't have two existing buildings, it doesn't meet the bylaw.
That's correct. Okay, I think we've covered that.
So Alex, do you have anything on the site plan design standards?
I was.
A little bit, but.
I, you know, briefly reviewed them and I thought they were all right, but I thought that they could be, I thought I'd get your suggestions.
Well, given the conversation on the Pulte, I wonder if we want to say that one of our considerations is, is not necessarily to balance the cut and fill on site because that was one of the stated objections on, or objectives on the Pulte and there's a lot of earth moving in order to not take soils off-site. And I think it was brought up by a member of the public about how much, you see some white here, but how much of that green is really going to be impacted by the construction? And it really has to do with the cut and fill. So I really would like to not just say minimize cut and fill, which we've said before.
Cut and fill plan.
Yeah, we really want a cut and fill plan.
Okay, that's fair.
And we want a calculation.
With.
It sounds like.
With elevations.
It sounds like you want to limit the grading to an area just adjacent to the structures.
Right.
And I think it would almost be better to say it in that way somehow than relative to the import, export or the cut and fill.
Because, you know, you could take, what I'd say is I want to take where it's higher, I want to take that and I want to put it where it's lower and it kind of evens it out and makes my construction easier to do, right? But it doesn't, you're not working with the topography the same way when you do that.
You, or you're not saving the topography.
No.
You're, you're doubling up on what you're touching.
Right.
So again, I think you want to say you just want to limit the grading to an area adjacent to the structures. And I'm making, I'm making a very general statement before we could tailor a better statement to say that.
You're right, but we, even, even if we're limiting it to the ones that are next to one another, we want to eliminate how much we're moving from this one to that one.
Yeah.
You know, even though you're going to disturb both.
Yeah.
You know, you can work with that topography.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be a way to help to develop a, work with it and stay to an area adjacent to the structure to allow them to take area that I cut on this three buildings, put it, fill it on the area for these two buildings.[1675.98] buildings, put it, fill it on the area for these two buildings, because the only reason I want to cut and fill it is to kind of match the existing topography.
But we want to also minimize the amount of retaining wall that would be allowed in order to do that, again, thinking about the Pulte ones where we have new retaining walls at the back sides of some of the properties because of how much earth movement there's been, because that goes against trying to work with the existing topography. So we want to discourage the use of retaining walls as much as possible, and discourage that too much cut and fill. I know it says it here in terms of earth moving, but I think cut and fill is more specific. So I don't know, wordsmith Alex, if you have a way to say that, or would you like me to think about how to say that?
Well, I mean, think about it, I've got it, we want to, we want to. The cuts and the fills need to be justifiable from a landscape architect's perspective.
I think you want the cuts and fills, again, within the area of the structures.
But they're going to cut and fill the roads, and then they can't just leave the.
All right, within the road and the structures. I think what Cheryl was getting at, and I agree with you, you don't want to go out to areas beyond where you're really constructing anything new and cut it to use it as fill.
Oh, I.
And vice versa, you don't want to take cut that you had to cut in areas that you're building structures and throw it in a hole that exists off the constructible area and disturb it.
Right, right.
You want to stay within the envelope of your construction, what your cuts and fills, envelope of construction or buildings and roads.
But you also want to discourage retaining walls, which is the.
Again, I'm trying to visualize, again, if you're going to put a house here and a house here, it'd be all right to take the cut here and put it over there, and end up with a topography that matched kind of it anyway. You get what I'm saying?
Right.
But if you stay within that envelope of construction, I think what you're trying to accomplish is not disturbing land.
Right.
That you don't have to disturb and change the topography, leave it natural, like me and my buffers, leave them alone.
And if you have to, then you'll have to take some soil off-site potentially in order to accomplish that.
Possibly, but I mean, I'm just leaving some flexibility that you can cut and fill with existing materials within your building envelopes and your roadways, or your construction areas, if you want to call it whatever.
We should probably ask for a plan that has the limits of construction on it, did we ask for that in the submission? I know we normally have been doing that, but.
And then we get into the exclusive use areas, which isn't really dealt with anywhere here. Since I assume that the exclusive use areas probably will be flat.
You mean for each residence?
For each residence, they're little pieces of nature.
I think I mentioned this before about public access other than just the parking spaces that get you to the DCR property. Do we think that that's just going to be sidewalks? Is this going to be private roadway or public roadway? I mean, one of the things that I think we talked about, if this is private roadway, are you, are there restrictions in terms of when people can come and use those parking spaces, or can people walk up and use the roadway to get to the DCR path?
I thought the open space was supposed to be accessible to the public, within.
All of it?
The property. Beyond even just the paths up to the DCR.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah. We've had that conversation before on Highland Ave.
My suggestion would.
So I mean, I think, I understand your question, is can they restrict access on the road, to residents only or something?
Well, I would like to be able to see bicyclists and pedestrians be able to at least walk the road or sidewalk and be able to get to the DCR property that way, rather than just having to drive and park there.
Well, the DCR has a say here about entry, I mean, it isn't as though we don't have quite a big entry to the park down the road a piece.
Right.
But we're providing, they're providing parking spaces that are dedicated to.
Well, they don't have to.
Right, so what we're saying is, you can get there if you drive, but if you walk or bike, you cannot get there.
Can we require public access over private property? That makes me a little queasy.
Well, it's currently, it's, I think it's voluntary.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, if.
Providing the parking spaces.
If they can provide permeable, the open land can include permeable parking spaces if they're, well, if they're used for access to the parkland, but it may be that the DCR would prefer that their access is be limited.
Well, it seems to me some of the support for having a development of this nature here was that there would be some trail access. So if there's, if that's optional, then I think the public needs to understand that and see if they support the plan, given that.
Well, let's ask the developer, well, ask the developer what the developer wants to provide, I mean, if they want to have it optional. I mean, if they say this is, we intend to have a trail, fine, but I'm not sure that we need, I mean, the Blue Hills reservation is nice, but I'm not sure that this is a critical element of this particular plan, but it could be.
I mean, the access doesn't exist today, that's for sure. It's quite clear you're not supposed to go up there, it's private property, there's certainly, the park, the DCR land is certainly accessible today, in close proximity to this site.
Well, it's been presented as a public benefit, and if it's optional and not mandatory, then I think that people.
You want a demonstrably or demonstratable advantage of this development over the subdivisions that would be by present zoning.
Exactly, yeah.
Which I think is always behind what we're doing here, but people just kind of put that aside.
So I'd be happy to see what the developer thinks and what members of the public think about that.
Aren't we sort of wondering whether or not this is preferable to a 40B development, because the developer has said that that's the.
Well, I was wondering if it's preferable to a two-acre zoned double-A, single-family housing development that's allowed under zoning presently, that's what I was thinking, that's what I was comparing to.
I mean, I think that that would destroy the entire site.
Yeah, I agree.
Two-acre subdivision.
I think it is preferable to that.
You'd have access to the Blue Hills on a public road, though.
If you accept, if you accepted it.
You wouldn't necessarily, it could be a private road.
Maybe not.
Because the subdivision control law has been interpreted, if you require parkland, which would include a path to parkland, you've got to pay for it, you've got to pay the owner for the.
The taking.
Well, my comment really relates to the fact that we're trying to have the language reflect the plan, and the plan has said there's trail access, and so if the language doesn't match the plan, then we need to talk about it.
Of course, we say may, and then we're going to have a development agreement.
Yeah, but may is not, well, all right.
I like, I like the idea of putting it into the development agreement. I don't want to require in a bylaw someone to take private property and perpetually make it accessible, that's not something I would want at all.
Can you help me out here? I'm a little bit lost here, this development agreement, if you write a bylaw and I come in and I meet the bylaw completely, what are you going to do with your development agreement?
The development agreement is something that you go to town meeting with and say, look, town meeting, if you pass this law, we have a legally binding agreement that this is how the developer will use this zoning.
So if this bylaw goes to the next town meeting, we have to have that zoning, that development agreement with it?
Yeah, but understand, Mike, if it's a different developer, he doesn't have a development agreement, so.
But now we have a bylaw that he can live by.
Correct, but if it's, if you have a development agreement with Northland, and then Northland says, I don't like this development anymore, sells his land, we don't have a development agreement.
Again, I'm confused.
Well, I guess the development, he couldn't probably sell it, because then it would be successful on the signs.
But of course, the development agreement could have a provision about assignment.
Right, that's what I mean.
But so if you go to town meeting, you have a bylaw, you have a development agreement, you say the bylaw is based on the development agreement, and the guy backs out of the development, do you still have a bylaw?
Yes.
Then now then the development agreement was meaningless, though.
So, but that's where the success is in the signs comes in.
I don't care about the development agreement.
But that would mean that the development agreement has to be signed by the property owner.
That's right.
Because the property owner, I don't think he owns the property right now.
So the.
He owns 19A.
Again, I'm confused, then, the development agreement is the bylaw, then?
The development agreement.
Because the guy can't sell it without living up to the development agreement.
No, no, it would be not if the development agreement does as you can.
Why don't we just put it in the bylaw?
I had a question, I had a question the other way, where this board would not necessarily be privy to the negotiations that lead to that development agreement. So what happens if the owner and the people that are party to the development agreement agree to something that's not in the zoning?
Well, then there's, the development agreement can't override zoning.
Well, then, of course, because.
What is the?
You can't, you can't.
So is it, it was a generous agreement?
Look, we could zone, we could zone this development. We could zone this development, in fact, if you go to the ice house zoning, you'll see that that's exactly what has been done, we have zoned a development. This zoning does not zone that development. We could change the zoning so that it zoned that particular thing, and that would address your, address your issues.
It was my understanding that we are developing a bylaw that's, if it ain't that, it's pretty dang close.
It ain't that, it is not even close.
It's 58 units, and that's 58 units.
I understand that, that is the only.
No, I think there's more than just that.
Well, I think.
You could commit with a totally different plan.
If you look at it.
If it showed 58 units and it met the setbacks, it could look totally different.
And I, to Mike's point and to what we've heard from members of the public, you know, there's a certain aspects of the plan which we can describe to encourage this type of the plan, of type of plan, but I do think there's more work to be done to verify that this plan will actually work in the way that it's the diagram now. There's a fair amount of work to take that into something that's been vetted, you know, in an engineering and otherwise way.
So with that said, then maybe we should, for that reason and that point, maybe we should stick with just the bylaw, because in that reasoning, I think the bylaw allows us more flexibility to say, we don't agree with that, until it comes around to what we want. I don't.
We're not bound by the development agreement, Mike, as the zoning, the planning board is, the developer is.
Well, I would say that.
But he's not the developer yet.
I would say the selectmen, the selectmen would add to the development agreement with our approval.
Well, based on this conversation, I think that, I think whatever we think is important should be in the zoning, we have no control over the development agreement.
I agree.
And so I still think that this is something that I'd like to hear from others about on this, on this access, and I'm not comfortable just saying that that would get covered in the development agreement.
Because we have no authority over the development agreement.
It's a different concept, and this has to be rewritten.
On this one, on the, on the public access, on that alone, it needs to be rewritten?
No, 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 if we're going to scrub the development agreement and want the essence of the development agreement to be in the zoning, we're going to have to rewrite the zoning, that's just the way it is.
I don't want that, just putting it on the table, that's certainly not what I want.
You would like to have a development agreement, I don't.
I don't care about a development agreement, Alex, I'm trying to, I'm talking about what it is and the idea of it, I could, I'm fine with living with the zoning personally. I like the idea of being able to make some modifications as you've stumbled across something, you come up with a better idea halfway through your plan, so.
I don't know how they would, if they're wandering around in the woods now, that would be too bad, because it seems to me that they have a well-trodden path they're on.
They probably do.
So, are we going to move on?
We can move on, I mean, as far as the access goes, I would, I would like to hear, if we're going to, if there's going to be reference to access in here, I'd like Tim or Bill to talk to John Flynn and find out if we're in danger of constituting a taking in any way. We require access.
Right, for the cluster language that came back from the Attorney General last time, she already told us that under the cluster that public access to private property could not be done, so you're kind of adding in here, that's, you're going down that same avenue that we went down with the cluster.
All right, then, it should be taken out of all presentations as a benefit of this development.
That's fine.
Because it's not.
I think it's a benefit, it may not be a direct benefit, because.
It's a maybe benefit, but it's not a required benefit.
It's a maybe benefit, but if they're going to, if they're intending to do it, and they're the developer, then, and they're going to do it, then it is a benefit of the development.
How does DCR feel about growing their parkland? And that, that's the benefit, DCR is growing their parkland, it's already weighs in to those properties, this just adds more property to DCR.
What do you mean adds more property?
Access, a little more access.
DCR.
He's suggesting that the DCR will get the conservation restriction on this, on the, I guess, on all, on some of it at least, and then the Conservation Commission would probably get the restriction on the front.
I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you, I'm just suggesting that if, you know, when they're coming in and making their special, their special permit pitch, certainly they can make, they make the argument that we're going to provide this, and that's their discretion, but I agree with you, if it's not required, we can't tout it as a benefit as part of our zoning, because we're not, we're not doing it.
How is this different than in 131 Elliott Street, where we said that they should have a little public park there and access for the public? As a, as a public amendment?
That was in exchange for the density bonus, I believe.
Boy, anything here is an exchange, it's an exchange for the benefit of the town, without demonstrably better. I mean, exchange, we're writing a whole bylaw for them. I don't understand what the difference is there, but.
Good question, I think.
It seemed more than acceptable there, it was encouraged.
And maybe it would have lost an appeal, who knows? So, I mean, you can put anything in a special permit, as long as no one calls you on it, it's fine. All right, let's, do you want to move on, or do you want to?
Well, I was just throwing out another, are we mandated to always accept roads as private roads instead of requiring them to be public roads? Because public roads provide for public access. Just throwing out a question.
Again, I think we have to do a taking to make them public roads.
They'd have to be accepted, and we would have to, the town would have to plow them and maintain them.
The developer could say no, right? I don't want them to be public roads, I don't want them to be private roads.
You can say that, but they could be public roads, but I mean, they can't have, people can still drive through the development.
We don't prohibit gates, right?
What?
We don't prohibit it being gated, do we?
I don't think it can be, yeah, we'll prohibit it being gated. This shall not be a gated community. And we'll prohibit fences along Canton Avenue.
I think, I think we've exhausted this topic, but what was the purpose of the four parking spaces that they were putting up adjacent to the DCR land?
They're suggesting that if, if they provide parking for DCR land, it can be in the open space as long as they're permeable, that was why this all came up.
And in reading that, I had a note to myself about public access, which is why I brought that up. On paragraph 16, I just, where the sentence that begins after due publication of notice, so the planning board should hold a public hearing within 65 days of filing of the application. Can we have that be of a complete application?
Well, you always run the risk, I mean, they come in, they slap something on the counter with the town clerk and say, here it is, this is an application, and Tim says, this isn't complete, this is, this is a travesty, and 65 days elapses, and then they go to court and said, we applied, 65 days is, or whatever the law says, has elapsed, and nothing's happened, I have constructive approval. And we say, well, it wasn't complete, and, but I don't, you know, I don't know that, I don't know that that would, that would work.
Can you refuse to accept the incomplete application?
The town clerk takes the thing and throws it at the, says, this is terrible.
She doesn't know if it's complete or not.
So, well, could you, so to Alex's point, could you say file the application in accordance with any established rules?
Well, I just think we have to be on our toes. If this is the law, is this the law, Bill? I don't know. Actually, I've got the law. Let's look it up.
All within such further time as may be permitted by general law.
Well, the reason I mention that is because, you know, some of these hearings can drag out for quite a long time.
Well, you can open a public. Well, you can open a public hearing and say this application isn't complete.
All right. Within 65, it's, it's in the law, within 65 days from the filing of the application. That's what it says.
Yeah.
So we can hold, but we can open the hearing and say, "Your application isn't complete, we're continuing you until it is."
That's, that's like a speedy trial, then, yeah. Looked at your application within the 65 days.
But once we open the hearing, we can continue it.
I thought we still have deadlines within the continuing...
Not till we close the public hearing. Once it's open, it's open.
All right, okay.
That's what we're dealing with, with, that's why, that's why we can't close the public hearing for Carrick right now because then we would be on the right time.
That's a catch-all for what you're looking to. Make sure you get a complete application before you continue.
Yeah, I just, looking for efficiency from the use of our time is all.
Right. This is government.
You disagree with that.
Well, I mean, time, time is money for them too, so it behooves them to submit a complete application.
Exactly.
90 days after the end of the hearing.
It's fine, line of cost of it versus the speed.
Alex, I, Alex, I had a quick question. Where'd you get 14 copies from?
I had 13 down and I thought that was unlucky, so I changed that.
How very Chinese of you.
That's why our office is a mess.
I don't know, figure out how many copies we need. 14, I mean, it seemed to me that, you're just saying that's too many copies for you to...
I, I, it was, I mean, but we...
You're thinking 10 copies would do it.
No, I mean, we use 13 because that's the number, I mean, I have a little post-it on my desk for, you know, two go to engineering, one goes to Board of Health, one goes to CONCOM, one goes to ECU.
One has to go to Alex.
One can go to the Historical Commission.
With that's...
He's in there and it's in there.
That's another 13. It's, it's not the biggest deal, I just...
If you want it to be 13, you can do 13. I think it's very unlucky to put 13 in.
Learned something about Alex Whiteside. Superstitious. All right. Tim, you can make the decision on that one.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna screw around with this.
Anything else? I have a couple of things that were raised at the public drainage, just to address it, you know, I don't know if we have a specific provision in here, but drainage is... We need a specific condition on drainage that they're gonna comply with whatever our drainage bylaws require.
Do we want to encourage...
Our stormwater bylaw, correct.
They have to because of the size.
It's a stormwater bylaw.
It's a whole, yeah, it's a town bylaw for that.
Okay, so fine. Just wanted, I want to address it because it was asked about at the public level. Trees, we've talked about it tonight, we're gonna put in, Cheryl's gonna propose some language from...
About the stormwater?
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, can we encourage low-impact design or is that engineering-supporting low-impact design for stormwater drainage?
Oh, they can do it.
Okay.
I think this would be a, there would be a great site for that.
I think that's a great...
So, can we put that in? That not only does it have to comply, but we're going to encourage low-impact design and...
Strongly encouraged.
Strongly encouraged, great.
Trees, we're gonna, you're gonna put some new language together for trees, I think we talked about tonight.
We did?
Where there are, it's already in here, but just, we're gonna have our tree protection language and they have to submit a tree plan and...
Oh, right, yeah, we should.
Right.
Yeah.
There was a question about limiting the number of triplexes. I just wanted to raise it with the board because it was raised by a couple of different people at the public level.
Is that the latest plan there?
I believe so, this is the 12.5. I guess it, architecturally, I think it would be, we're, we're going to get a repetitive unit with getting lots of twos. If we had some threes, we might have an opportunity for some variety, as long as it's not all garage doors. So I have, maybe we could limit the number of threes, but allow some nominal number just for variety.
Do you want to limit having more than one triplex adjacent to each other?
Could do that.
And we can do spacing.
Right.
Yeah.
And that would, that would eliminate some of the, maybe eliminate some of the concern with the larger buildings is that they're gonna be, you know, there's not gonna be two or three or four in a row.
Mm-hmm. And I, I mean, I suppose what you could say is, on the threes, is that not all the garage doors could face the street so that you would be sort of mandating some?
Well, they said that the hearings are not gonna be dominated by the doors.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to come around the side, but I don't know if you have enough room between the buildings to come around the side.
I'm being pretty clear about the doors. That gives us the power to talk about that in the hearing, if we're gonna see the specific application.
I mean, obviously there's a trade-off. I mean, this plan is...
That shows 64, 60...
Is compact in the sense of where you're putting these. It's, it's compact in the sense of how close you're putting these, but it doesn't leave a lot of flexibility in how you do your garage doors. So you would have to have a different site plan. But it also then impacts your, what cuts into this sort of green space. So there is, you know, some...
In fact, maybe you could, you could have not all the garage doors facing the street by just turning some of the buildings sideways to the street.
Yeah, but you, then your driveway's gonna have to loop, so you just need a little bit more land for it.
A little bit, yeah, a little bit more land. There's a way to design it.
And if you were creative with your site planning, you could have a combination of singles and triples and doubles so that you could almost get a groupings going instead of a cookie cutter. And we might encourage that, I suppose, in our, in the plan language.
What, encourage what?
The combinations of different sizes and grouping. So if you had singles, doubles, triples, or...
You're probably are gonna come up with some language indicating amassing, amassing, like...
Some use, some use of common driveways.
Yeah. That's a good one, Bill.
Use of common driveways.
The only other item was traffic. Do we need to require traffic study in this zoning or is that something that we can just ask for? Or is there another provision that allows us to do it somewhere else, Bill?
Mike makes an interesting point about maybe that we should get a, before we go to town meeting, we should have a traffic study showing that this is not going to, that if they pass this zoning, they haven't just done something that's for sure going to screw things up.
What about, rather than a study, an opinion from a traffic engineer?
An opinion?
No.
No.
No traffic study beyond what's been done before town meeting.
Well, we could do one independently.
Not from Norfolk. Not from Norfolk, the town wants to pay for its own.
Yeah, we're not paying for a traffic study. We can't even afford a traffic study on our own.
Town wants to pay for its own, you can do it.
I mean, this, 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 little doubt there's gonna be an impact.
So, look, the applicant, if the, if the petitioner of this wanted to prepare a, a traffic study before town meeting in order to satisfy any concerns that might be raised at town meeting, that's his, that's his prerogative, right? But I think we definitely have to require a traffic study as part of this application.
I think, I think the bylaw should indicate that if there's a detrimental traffic impact, you know, it won't go forward.
Or, or it's mitigated. If it can't be mitig, if it can't be mitigated, Mike, you're right, then it won't go forward. But if they, you have to give them the option to mitigate it. That could help us, right, in the long run. But I don't think, to me, to the, to Ned Corcoran's point, how can we require Ned Corcoran to submit a traffic study on a, on a planning board?
We can't because he said he won't do it.
Well, but we also, this is our, this is our Warren article.
He could try.
Asked and answered.
I mean, this, this, this developments that, you know, it could be seriously questionable. Is, is there really gonna be much of an impact of this? There's gotta be an impact, yeah, there has to be. The driveway is within an...
There should be a traffic study, that's what I'm saying. Do we need to, do we need to require it in this language or is it required by some other mechanism? Because if it's not required, we should require it in here.
We should require it in the byline.
Right. I think that...
Give the planning board the discretion to get it peer-reviewed and also demand certain mitigation to, to satisfy impacts.
All depending, I mean, say that it's a C-level deal and this would make it a D-level deal. Does that, is that a, a deal breaker? Or does it have to push it into an F situation?
Can we, can we write into the bylaw that it's an independent traffic review?
No, you can, you can require independent third-party review of their traffic study.
I mean, because in...
You want them to do the traffic study and then we'll do the peer review.
In my experience, there's, there is some, there's some abstractness in traffic. There's some opinionated.
Of course there is.
So...
There's some in stormwater too, Mike.
Depending who's, who you're doing the traffic study for, sometimes you're led in a certain finding.
Well, the peer review would definitely be useful. I know, I think, I don't think that would be unexpected once this zoning were passed and it was a special permit. That's happened on other developments and I think that would be consistent.
We can get the proper language, but you make a good point if the, if the, I don't know, the proper language right now, the adjacent intersections denigrate by two, two levels or whatever. I, you're right, they do grade them A, B, C, I don't know what they call it, whether it's a grading or...
A, B, C, D, F, yeah. I mean, at some point, it's the planning board's decision. If it goes from C to D, does the planning board think that that's warrant, does that warrant not granting a special permit or requiring mitigation? If, if we think no, then, I mean, then we can pass it with this from C to D. I think at some point, it's the planning board's discretion, right?
Then, then the discretion will be let open, Mike just saying the independent traffic study has to be done and if any intersections, adjacent intersections are degraded, then mitigation has to be undertaken.
The planning board can take whatever action.
At the planning board's discretion.
Or set every, any condition it wants, right?
Well, we know that light at Blue Hill Avenue and Canton Avenue is a problem.
Right.
I mean, that light's...
It's a problem for a lot of people.
Potentially an F. That light's probably already an F. It's probably gonna go from an F to an F. Which you can do.
Double F.
You can get to an F to a worse F, I've done it.
A red F.
But that intersection is not necessarily beyond some improvement. So that would be the question, what would, what would be the mitigation that could actually help a different situation? If, if there is one.
Might be just simply contributing $10,000 to a traffic mitigation fund for the town and we start saving money to fix it.
I mean, I've been involved in projects where the mitigation has to do with improvements to signalization and timing, you know, the timing of, and, and that cost is borne by the developer.
Yep.
Is that a state light, Bill?
It's gotta be with Blue Hill Ave. I mean, the problem is, the Blue Hill Ave is almost like a highway.
Yeah.
It is a highway.
To change the, the lighting sequence and disrupt Blue Hill Ave, it'd be like...
Well, it's already a problem right now.
That's already a problem, yeah.
They need to fix the problem that they already have, really.
Canton Ave's a problem, but Blue Hill Ave is like...
Hey, last man in, always get stuck with it. So at some point, someone's gonna carry that water. And I think we have the ability to require a traffic study and then use our discretion to figure out what the right solution is.
Well, I know people don't want to hear it, but it's, at a certain point, a develop, certain, developing areas, it's just gonna, you can't...
Right, last man in, get stuck with it.
Or you just, or you just stop increasing the density of the development because you can't handle it.
Well, the one thing that I keep in mind is that I've seen a lot of 40B developments and I've never seen one rejected because of traffic.
I agree.
Never.
Traffic would certainly be worse on that.
And so, I mean, if we were to say, "Well, do a 40B and we'll reject it for the same reason," I, I think that you would find that, they would say that, no, traffic is not going to stop this. That's my view.
You might be able to mitigate it.
They might be able to ask for some mitigation.
And, you know, I think like some people in the public have stated, and I, I understand what you're saying and I understand the realities, but it, it seems to me that we're constantly getting up to this point where we've gotta give them what they want or else they're gonna put 40B and that's that. So what do we even, what are we even discussing here? That if we're just gonna give them what they want?
What are we even elected for?
Right, if they're just gonna do what they want or else threaten 40B and we gotta give them what they want.
The world we live in.
We want to, we want to give them...
I'd like to, I'd like to, I like to discuss, analyze things without that hanging over my head, if you would.
But then you'd say, then you'd say, "Well, let's forget this development because there's no downside." The 40B is the downside that makes us really think about these things very carefully. It would be, without 40B, it would be easy to say, "This is too dense, forget it."
And there's no criteria, apparently, which is expressing to us that there is no criteria to 40B, you can put any one of any size anywhere.
No, 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 I'm simply saying I have never seen a 40B rejected because of traffic considerations, other than, other than when it's in the middle of the woods and they want to use a rutted road of...
This is in the middle of the woods.
No, this is on a, this is on a big road, it's...
I think one of the things we do need to consider is that we need to require the traffic study in terms of, at the time that we're, an application is being reviewed, you know, what that traffic study says. I, I do recall that Ned had presented some information. A single-family development with families with, with, you know, children at home has a certain number of trip generation and that's generated by the traffic engineers' guidelines. And then if you have age restricted, that you have a different number of trip generation. So the traffic study will need to be specific to the site plan that comes in. And if it is the 58 units versus a subdivision, that could be, what was it, 23 single families or a cluster of 40-some?
30-some.
You know, 30-some, you know, what's the, what's the incremental increase of that? And then, then what they will do is they'll look at how the roadways can handle that increased trip generation, right? And if, if there is a mitigation measure, then they can suggest what that measure might be. I personally think that there's signalization issues at that intersection. Whether that's enough to mitigate the existing problem, I have no idea.
I mean, the real test though, realistically, what you're saying is exactly right. You can build 20 some odd houses there now. It would, might not look very nice, but you could do it by zoning. So they're gonna say, the traffic report's gonna say you could do this many, this would allow for this many. Is that, is that different number of cars really gonna impact the chaos at that light?
It's not zero to this, it's something in between to this.
Right, so I mean, you're, you're gonna find that the traffic study, you know, is probably gonna have a pretty minimal impact when you're talking about 58 units versus what you could build there, which is probably 24, by right.
23 maybe.
23, fine. You're talking about, you know, a couple of cars an hour. We'll be right there. All right, one last thing is the board, I would like to make sure we have the ability to require some surety on the backend of these things. So again, I'll try to, we should just make sure if we can, that we have the discretion to put that, that type of thing in. Okay.
Can I just ask something real quick?
Yes, please.
There was nothing about sidewalks. Is that something that, in terms of the design of the road?
It refers to subdivision requirement.
It what?
The bylaw does refer to subdivision, the rules and regulations that the council, subdivision roads respect to sidewalks.
Okay. So it would be required to, I think, right? Want to reference the section, Ned?
Ned, all I see is in paragraph 15, Conservation Commission and Board of Health shall act upon the referral in the same manner as on...
We'll make sure it's in here. It sounds like Ned opened it up, so let's just make sure it's in here on the site requirements.
48, section nine. Which tells you you can do that.
Medication.
You can ask court.
Okay.
That is, I was searching for subdivision, it could be referred to in a different way, yeah. It's in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Section 948.
All right. We go, I'm actually gonna go behind you first because you're gonna want to respond to whatever Mr. Walker's attorney says as well.
I'm just gonna pick up the issue on traffic and I'll see if it's be helpful for Ned to hear everybody's comment.
Yep, I agree. Yep, I agree, yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kirk Connors representing the Walker family at 1776 Canton Avenue. As you know, I've been here before in opposition to the warrant bylaw at all. But given that it's on the warrant now, we are here to try and improve it and I've heard a lot of good comments tonight from, from all the board members. Picking up on traffic, the question I was gonna ask is, would it be helpful to the board to know what the traffic count and the traffic situation is now? My, my client has engaged a traffic engineer. We're weighing whether to do a full analysis. You know, we've got somebody doing a $50 million project who isn't willing to put anything on the table. My client's wondering if, if... My client's wondering if an analysis of current situation or a full-blown analysis would be probative to the board at this time. We're being told it would take a couple of months to do the full analysis, but I think we could get counts in a quicker timeframe and at least say whether this is a D or an F situation. And I think Town Meeting might wanna know that, whether we're proposing new development on top of an F. So, but I don't wanna waste my client's money. So if the decision is that this is strictly a permitting issue for later, then I won't ask him to do the counts now.
I don't wanna speak for the whole board, but from my perspective, I don't know that it would change what I would do here. I can't speak for how it could affect, you know, how Town Meeting might see it. And whether your client could get permission from the moderator to speak at Town Meeting would be another item, so.
Sure.
That's my opinion. I'll let other people speak, obviously.
It would be good to have a base level that's independent of the developer, if you will. I mean, Polte had some information that was from, I forget the source, but they said the traffic on Equity Road was better today than it was 20 years ago, or something to that effect. And I don't know where they came up with that. So if things come into play, that seemed to sometimes justify the person. Wants them to be justified, so. So to have an independent baseline, you know, I can't speak to the expense, but it would be something to have.
Okay.
My view is that since it's going to take you, it would be nice to know if it's an F situation. But we wanna put something together and have public hearings on what we put together. And waiting for your traffic study to be complete or reasonably complete probably is something that would be not wise for us to do. But when you come to Town Meeting, you may feel that this is something that could impact the way the Town Meeting dealt with the bylaw, the proposed bylaw. And what's the point of keeping it a secret? I mean, because they're going to, I mean, maybe they can address what you do, but they're going to, whenever you disclose it, they're going to put their people on it to counter it as best they can.
You know, really, sorry, Cheryl, but just to, what Alex was just saying, knowing it's an F is one thing. It would be more important, frankly, to know if it was a D now and it was going to an F, or if it was a C and going to a D, because that's gonna be the more important. I mean, if it's an F and it's staying an F, it's less dramatic than if it's a D and it's slipping to an F. So that's, you're not gonna know that level of detail until you spend the money.
But I think what you first got at there is just to do a present traffic count and designate the intersection today, A, B, C, D, whatever it is.
The intersection should already be designated, or they just look up the intersection probably?
Yeah, but the study might, the last time somebody did it might have been 15, 20 years ago. I don't know.
That's true.
I don't know. But I think what you're indicating in your first comment was, I believe that could be done in short order, to do the full traffic study of the impact of certain types of developments. That's gonna take a pair of time, but just to get a baseline of what the condition is presently, I think it's just a matter of doing a traffic count. And then, I mean, the grading, and my understanding is the grading is, if I sit through one traffic cycle, light cycle, it's an A, or if I don't sit through more than one on so many occasions, it's an A. If I sit through one on multiple occasions, it's a B. And if I sit through two light traffic signals, it goes down to a C. So, I mean, I think that can be done in short order.
Well, I think-
Oh, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
I mean, my feeling is that the town has experienced a lot of increased traffic during rush hour when people are commuting through town. And certainly Canton Ave and Blue Hill Ave experienced that. So I wonder whether the state has any data. Have they looked at? I mean, Bill, do you know, or would the town engineer know whether data is readily available? My preference would be for the data to come from the town or the planning board or the applicant rather than one of butter. Just, I think it, the, it doesn't seem really that a butter should have to, you know, incur the expense, frankly, on an article that we're sponsoring.
You were just getting at something there. I mean, anything we get from the developer, we're gonna expect to be peer-reviewed, so we would probably wanna submit the same test to a butter's submission.
We would, I think. We'd want to have, you know, a peer review of anything that's coming from an interested party, if you will. Whereas like if the town did it, there would be, and I would hope, you know, an uninterested party, if you will. So that's why I was wondering if the state had some data.
I believe they do. I'm just not sure how old they are. I know that they did a safety study last year. I'm not sure if there were counts associated with that safety study. The safety study was for Napont Valley Parkway, Milton Street, and Atherton Street. Doesn't take in the Blue Hill Ave, Brecheau Road, but it's close.
Did we do anything for Milton News at this intersection?
I think it was a-
I do believe they have some preliminary stuff there. I know they don't have the full stuff done yet, but there may be some preliminary numbers in there.
I think it was a state agency that Polte quoted that said the intersection at Blue Hills Parkway and Canton Ave was better than it was a number of years before.
That might be level of service that he's talking about, not cars.
I think they said the traffic flow was better, but whatever.
Well, that would be level of service.
The interesting thing is that I guess they do a lot of this with video now. So you actually, they would set up cameras, record the data. And I guess there's a place in Canada that's the only one that has the software, so you have to send everything to Toronto or wherever it is. But they actually give you a count based on the camera, so it's not even interpretation. So it would be, in effect, raw data. So, you know, maybe it would need a peer review, maybe it would be accepted at that level. But I guess the purpose of it is one to be able to advise my client, "Go forward, don't go forward." And it sounds like I would advise him to consider going forward, at least on the current status piece of it, because we can't really do the whole thing until we know mitigation and everything that might be on the table that we would have at a permit level. I guess I would wanna make sure that there was leave in the board's hearing process to receive that data, that I wouldn't wanna have him go to the expense and just say, "Well, we closed that in February, so it's now March 15th, and it's too late." I mean, we've got till May, and I guess that's one of the questions.
Well, we don't have until May. We have until May for Town Meeting. The planning board needs to be done. I mean, we have to submit something. We could submit no recommendation at this time to the warrant committee, but that's not preferred course, obviously.
Right.
Not for an article that we're sponsoring.
Well, I'll advise him that it might be wasted effort, but I guess to the extent that the board has the time and the leeway to receive the data timely, I think we'd be interested in doing that. So I will let him know this evening.
Any other comments?
I do. I have, we submitted bylaw revisions, and I think I could, I would take Mr. Whiteside's advice and just talk concepts, and, you know, instead of going exactly line by line. I do have a couple of extra copies, if anyone doesn't have it, in front of them. You've already touched on some of them. One was, you know, I thought that we understood from previous meetings that there was no need for a three-dwelling unit, but it sounds like there might be some preference for variety. I'm not sure that the butters feel that way. I think they prefer to see everything limited to two. But I'll let other butters speak for themselves. A number of the changes in what I proposed actually come from the Town Zone Plan Unit Townhouse Development bylaw. There were provisions, and basically, this appears to be very closely tailored and basically taken from that, that bylaw, but I noticed that certain provisions were missing. So I've reinserted those. I also compared against the Town's Cluster Development bylaw, particularly in terms of the open land component of it, because even though this is a PUD, they're clearly touching on cluster-type language in terms of how you're gonna deal with the open land. And I know that's something that the board has talked about tonight. In terms of the density, I think we're with Mr. Whiteside that somehow we have to be clear about how many units this is gonna be. The applicant's draft says 1.4 units per acre. To my understanding and my client's calculations, that's based on 64 units. I don't think that the butters have expressed any interest in ever having 64 units on the site. And a corollary comment to that is, you know, if the affordables can't be done off-site, I think that the butters' expectation is that 58 would be the absolute cap under any circumstances. And it sounds like Northland has had some positive communications in terms of moving the affordables off-site, but that's gonna be their burden to come back. So you would either be reducing 1.4 to 1.23, which reflects 58 units, or as Mr. Whiteside did, just change it to 58 units, which is, seems a much more elegant and simple way to do it. For Section 7 setbacks, again, I think the board has covered some of this, that we're trying very hard in a bylaw to capture and really lock what's been shown to us on a plan, and this plan isn't binding at this time. So you'll see our edits to Section 7 are quite lengthy. And I'll hand out a few copies of a plan. We engaged Beals and Thomas to assist us in trying to figure out what are the appropriate setbacks to try and lock this plan. And on this in red, I may have given somebody my own notes, actually, from Mr. Clark. Bill, are my comments on your plan?
No.
Okay.
Unless they're red numbers.
Nope.
Nope.
No comment.
Okay. So, you know, without belaboring it, I mean, basically, you could take paragraph 7 and compare it against the plan, but this is getting exactly what the board was talking about, that the bylaw is written, says no buildings within these setbacks. But it says nothing about roads, utilities, drainage, all these other features that we talked about that everybody understands and looking in this plan aren't gonna be in those sections or in those areas. And so these edits are to specify that, you know, in terms of side setbacks, you can do certain things within certain distances, again, as shown on the plan. And the same for the rear. I don't think that we touched the front, because that seems more simple. I won't go through each of them, but I just wanted to point out that there was a method to the detail in this particular Section 7 provision. And it's gotta, you know, and maybe this isn't the way to do it with each of these, you know, separate dimensions based on driveways, based on plot, you know, property lines, based on easement lines. But there has to be some way to lock this plan more definitively than the loose way that Northland has proposed it to the board. Affordable units, I touched on that, that under any circumstances, I think that we're asking that there never be any more than 58 units on site. It's up to the board how they wanna deal with Northland and making that happen. If, you know, the affordables are fine to be on site, as long as it's 58. It just can't be 58 with six more coming back if things don't work out. For parking in the open land, one additional edit that we had in Section 11, beyond what was generally discussed, was to say that the parking would be contiguous to the DCR land so that you wouldn't put parking, you know, over by somebody else's property line and have, you know, I think that's probably commonsensical to serve the DCR land if that is what ultimately happens. But we did wanna make that clarification. And in 11D, open land, I did make a number of edits, and I borrowed these from the Town Zone Cluster bylaw, which, again, seems to be trying to get at the exact same ideas. That says, you know, you can, this can be held in conservation, but it's gotta be by an entity whose primary purpose is to hold conservation land. So you can't just trump up a trust or a corporation to do it. And most importantly, we say that it has to be a filing requirement. So Northland, or, you know, if anybody else could ever get in some other district, can't come in, take everybody through the whole process, the expense and everything, and not have somebody on the other end to hold the conservation restriction. I have certainly, in my professional experience, had times where I thought that we had a great piece of land and the town and state agencies and environmental groups said we have absolutely no interest in holding it. We've got plenty of other things to do, and this is an expense we don't wanna bear. So maybe Northland already has a deal in place with DCR, they feel comfortable that they will. But we've asked that it be a filing requirement, that they've already had those communications and that they already have that commitment before they would come before the planning board to seek any approvals. We also add, one other general thing, we did add language about blasting, trying to limit it. We said within 500 feet of any residential property line. That's not a magic number, but we are looking for some type of limit so that you're not blasting next to my client's property or anyone else's property. And again, that flows with these setbacks and everything else that we've talked about, which are pretty loosey-goosey at this point. So those were more the edits to, you know, clean it up and get it consistent with other existing town bylaw provisions. We did add an entire section dealing with traffic. It sounds like, particularly from the chair, but from a number of other members, that there's an interest in requiring a traffic impact study during the permitting stage. I added a new Section 15 under my draft that deals specifically with that. And it's, we feel fair in the sense that it would tell Northland exactly what it needs to do. It would protect the butters in having clarity on what they can expect, and it also protects the board's discretion in that it doesn't require a specific outcome that the board ultimately makes the decision of whether the standards have been met or not. And the same thing in, what, in mine is a Section 15B. Created language related to a tree study. And I don't know if this is something that Mr. Gaius could use as a base, but saying, you know, I think it's part of a filing requirement, the board needs to be aware of exactly how many trees of some significant level. We've said 10 DBH, 10 inches DBH as a threshold, but, you know, whatever threshold the board sets. I think you'd be surprised, maybe shocked, at the number of trees that are proposed to be removed as part of this. And the provision doesn't say that you have to do anything specific or that there's a number or a percentage of trees that can or can't be removed. It just says that the applicant has to provide a plan that shows exactly what's gonna be taken down over that significance level. And then the board has its discretion of how to deal with that. But I think the board at least needs to be aware of that. And there are other comments. They're in the draft that I provided, available to answer any questions. But I know we've heard a lot already, and I know that other people wanna speak as well.
That's helpful. Thank you very much. Does anybody else wanna speak about this before Mr. Corcoran, in case he wants to respond to any of it? I am looking forward to hearing it.
Good evening, Chairman Furs, members of the planning board, Mr. Clark, Mr. Churwinski. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Hale Smith. I have been a resident at 1632 Canton Avenue since 1979. And I am here tonight to offer suggestions regarding Northland Residential Corporation's proposal for Great Estate Plan Unit Development Zoning Amendment for the Carberry-Walcott property. I am neither a real estate attorney nor a zoning expert, but my read of Northland's proposed amendment seems like spot zoning, since it entirely, is entirely specific to the Walcott-Carberry property. It also lacks any linkage or relationship to existing double-A zoning of the neighborhood. The town's 2015 master plan states as its number-one objective or goal, "To preserve," and I quote, "to preserve and enhance the individual character of each of Milton's neighborhoods, including natural and historic features of each." The essential feature of the great estates of Milton is the presence of large areas of open land. The Blue Hill Neighborhood Association suggests that the great estates' plan unit development zoning should allow density of no more than twice the underlying zoning or 44 units in the case of the Carberry-Walcott property. The association further submits that 60% to 65% of the land should be left as open space rather than the 50% proposed or stated in- rather than the 50% proposed or stated in Northland's zoning proposal. We believe that this higher, that the higher density of double and triple condominium units and townhouses should be offset by more open space. The Blue Hill Neighborhood Association would support a revised concept plan that eliminates the double-loaded spur road that's parallel to Canton Avenue and the two townhouse structures closest to Wilcott Path, the principal DCR trail between Trailside Museum and the DCR headquarters. To summarize, the neighborhood recognizes the right of Northland Residential Corporation to develop the Carberry-Wilcott property, but believes that the Great Estate Plan Unit Development Zoning Amendment should limit overall density to twice the existing zoning and preserve approximately 2/3 of the great estates as open space through a conservation restriction held by a responsible party. Thank you for your time and for consideration of these suggestions. Are there any questions I can answer?
Well, I have a question. AA zoning provides for two-acre lots, 80,000-square-foot lots with new roadways on, sort of cross-hatched on a site of land, and that is the standard that AA areas have to meet.
Right.
And so that is the standard that you should proceed from, not the fact that there's nothing there now.
Well, you know, I believe that this developer and his attorney would have the neighborhood believe, and the planning board believe, that the only viable alternatives for this parcel are either their proposal for 64 or 58, or whatever number of units you ultimately decide on, and 40B. That is simply not the case. There are other alternatives, there are conversations occurring, you know, with interested parties in funding a buy-down of the number of units and increase in the amount of open space. So the Blue Hill Neighborhood Association is really coming before you to ask for the planning board's support to push Northland towards a better solution for the neighborhood confidentiality from each party. So I'm, you know, I don't have more information to share with you, but I know there are activities, I know that there's a possibility for a better solution for Milton.
Well, the reason I ask the question, if you have a development, everyone poo-poo's 40B. They say, "That will never happen to me."
I'm not saying that at all.
No, but this is what I think you are saying, and this is how I interpret what you're saying. You come in and you say, "They want 58, 64 units, which they're willing to reduce to 58. However, that's no good. They need to take no more than double the number of 80,000-square-foot lots you can fit in here, so that they have to settle for 44 units." That's what you said. And if they don't, then they're on their own. And I think that you're just asking, you're just asking for trouble with that sort of unrealistic suggestion. Fine, if you can buy out some of the land, great. That would be terrific. But if you can't, the idea of they're going from 58 to 44 isn't going to happen. You're just asking them, they're daring them to do a 40B. Well, that's how I interpret what you're saying.
Well, you're misinterpreting.
Well, I may, but that's how I dare.
No, that's not, what I am looking for is a win-win, you know, solution for both Northland and for the neighborhood and the town. And that involves compromise on all parties, but there is significant funding available, should agreement be possible between Northland and interested parties.
Can you express the concerns about, Alex asked, you know, how you arrived at the 44, you know, there could be economics involved in how you arrive at the number, but are there specific impacts that you see between 44 and 58 that make this untenable? What are those significant impacts?
Well, the first is, is, as you well know, you know, this site is nexted to Blue Hills Reservation, DCR property, and, you know, the neighborhood and the friends of the Blue Hills, and in fact, you know, DCR itself would like to minimize the impact of this development on the Blue Hills. And the two units that are, you know, on the conceptual site plan that are closest to Wilcott Path, those two units, would be clearly visible from Wilcott Path, which is the main thoroughfare through the reservation. It's the principal path in the whole reservation. And so, you know, the DCR would like to mitigate that impact. And then when you look at the spur road that's parallel with Canton Avenue, that is five units loaded on two sides of the road. When you look uphill at that, those five structures, you will see only a solid wall of buildings, you know, which is totally, you know, inappropriate for what exists in the neighborhood today. So those are the, those two areas add up to 14 units. Furthermore, when I was in discussions with Mr. Dolly about the possibility of asking him to consider a cluster zoning, he actually came back with a proposal to do a 44-unit development for a large amount of money, which I won't say, because I don't think, you know, I said I would, you know, maintain confidentiality. So that is the number he has actually approached me with in the past. And, you know, frankly, as the neighborhood considers cluster zoning or this 44-unit development, it turns out that cluster zoning would, at 32 or 33 units, would actually leave less open space than this townhouse development at 44 units. So our principal goal is to maximize the amount of open space, of permanently protected space, and this seems to be the best alternative to do that. So those are, you know, that's maybe more information than you wanted, but those are our considerations.
Now, the other thing I wanted to ask about, we've had various people come in and speak to us, some on behalf of the association and some maybe not, and there seems to not be 100% agreement about the position. So when you say the neighborhood, are you speaking about the Neighborhood Association? And if you are, was there a vote taken by the Neighborhood Association, and what was the participation rate of the association?
Well, Ted Phillips was here at your last meeting, which I missed, and I think he shared the votes that were taken.
Yeah.
I don't remember the numbers exactly.
I took some notes.
I think we had about 25 email responses, and that 14 of them, I believe, were either in favor of no development or 44 units, and 11 were supported the 58-unit development. I will tell you that there's not a single neighbor that would support 58 units without the threat, the constant threat of 40B from Northland and Northland's attorney.
So I have in my notes, I think, from when Mr. Phillips spoke, that there's about 60 members in the association, is that right? He's back there nodding his head, yes.
The number's 30 households.
And 30 households, right? Okay. So, and those are the folks who are on Carberry Lane and across Canton Ave, is that primarily?
No, they, you know, they're also further down on Canton Avenue. You know, it's the general neighborhood area, the whole sort of Upper Canton Avenue area.
Would it be, would all, are all of these neighbors here a part of the association?
Most of them are, yep. But it goes further down Canton Avenue than that.
You know, the comment that resonates with me is that a bunch of your neighborhoods would not support 58 without the threat of 40B. You know, I think Alex points out, the threat of 40B is what, is why we're even having this conversation.
Well, I know that. Listen, I understand that it's very real, that's a possibility. I'm just saying that there's a possibility for a better solution.
That's, so as a planning board, we've seen it go from 72 units, I think, or to 75 units, down to 58 units. You know, we've seen a fair amount of concession. I appreciate everything you're doing to buy down, and I think that's a great solution. But at some point, we have a bylaw in front of us, whether it's a citizen's petition or this bylaw, it's in front of us. And in our, I, we're hearing from the people that are putting forward this application, that if it's 44 units, we can pass the bylaw if we want a town meeting, but we're going to get a 40B. So as the five elected people sitting in, four elected people sitting in front of you tonight, you know, we have to deal with that threat, too. And if we limit it to 44 units, and then all of a sudden, there's a comprehensive permit application for 200, have we done our job?
No, you haven't.
Okay.
So I recognize that you are in a difficult spot, and the developer and, you know, is doing his best, and his attorney is doing his best to make you think that you have no choice, and to make the neighbors think that there's no choice.
It's the application before us. That's what it comes down to. So whether we have, we do have a choice, we all have a choice, right? We can reject the application, but the choice could come with a really ugly penalty.
Well, I would suggest that you defer a decision on the application for as long as you possibly can, to give the parties that are negotiating time to come up with a deal.
Well, us moving forward, the bylaw doesn't in any way change your ability to still buy down the plan. And if this is drafted in the right way, it allows for a maximum number of units, but it would limit it to a, you could build less units under that provision.
If Northland has approval to do this development, they have very little incentive to, you know, negotiate.
I don't know, as a developer, if someone's going to pay me the same amount of money, and I don't have to build any of the units and sell all the units and take the risk, I'm going to take the money today. So there's a pretty good incentive, I think.
Right, but, you know, the...
It's a tough negotiating position.
It's, you know, it puts, it puts the Neighborhood Association and its friends in a difficult negotiating position.
I understand.
If I want $10 something, and I have a bylaw in place now, I want $15.
I am well aware of how that works.
I just want to comment, too, on the...
You have until May, town meeting, to, I mean, effectively, this won't pass until town meeting.
Well, I know that.
So.
But you have, you know, how long will you take before you make your recommendation to the selectmen?
It's the warrant committee that we make our recommendation to, just for clarification, but, I mean, it could be, they want us to make it by the end of January.
Can you make it at the end of February?
I don't know if we'll make it by March. We'll have to see how many, how much more deliberation this board goes through, so.
The warrant will go to press, I think, in March.
In March, yeah.
And it's not, not to say that there couldn't be amendments even after that, that, all the way up until the time of town meeting. It's preferable not to go that long, but it does happen. I just want to also point out that we've seen subdivision plans for this property that I know I have felt strongly would ruin what people like about this property, and that's not even, that's not even a 40B threat. You know, that's just what you could do under the AA zoning. So I do, I do think that the plan has gotten better, and it can continue to get better, and it can continue to address people's concerns. And it should. And I don't want to, we don't want to codify this so much that there's no flexibility to make it better. And the, but until we get to a step where somebody can see that there's room for this to go, there's only so far you can take a diagram like this. So you've got to get to a step that says, yes, there is a path for this to go, that we can continue to make the plan better. I think that's what we're trying to do here.
Yeah.
I just think there's, there seems to be some outside influence that might get to a point that everybody wants to get to, and that's the deal that's good for everybody, so.
Well, I mean, to that buy-down, I mean, if that can happen, that sounds like the neighbors would be very happy with that, that's one thing. But I, just in terms of how to get to a good plan and to mitigate potential concerns that people have, so people have, you mentioned a couple of concerns, that can be looked at in terms of the plan, and, you know, and if the plan can get better, is what I'm saying. It's like, it's not, we're trying to address some of the things that we've heard from people to date, and we, you know, we would continue to do that through the application process. But that, what I can say is that plan's not going to get a lot more concrete in terms of reality until we make some next steps.
Right, okay.
We're in a public hearing process right now, right?
No. We're just letting the public speak, but the public hearing will actually be, that's a whole other round. Once we make our recommendation, we'll have a public hearing on it.
When you're ready.
To make a recommendation.
Make a recommendation.
To make a recommendation, we'll have a public hearing on it. I think we appreciate your comments, and we hear your concerns, and we're wrestling with much of what you're wrestling with.
Yeah. Should I leave a copy of these notes?
Yes, please. Yep, thank you. And if you could just send those around to him, that'd be helpful, so as we're all looking at our notes, that'd be helpful. Yes, sir.
May I?
Hi, my name is Ted Phillips. I'm at 28 Hamlock Drive. Mostly today, I'm representing myself as opposed to the association, just because I haven't had a chance to talk with everybody. As to the plan and its existence and its current state, I do want to point out, you know, as I've seen the evolution of this, it includes a lot of things that people have specifically asked for. The DCR asked for the trail access and the trailhead at the back, complete with a kiosk and a map station and everything else. So they're thinking of true access for the area. The buffer around the Walker side of the property has been a direct result of discussions with Mr. Walker and his representatives to lessen the impact on that property, which was, was pretty gross in the first couple of times. And so at the bottom, just off the screen there now, indicates a walking path that was asked for specifically by one of the abutters. And so what I'm trying to say is that the plan as presented now is the best possible marketing document that Northland could present to the community and to the board. I think it's imperative that we, as the community, and I'm going to ask the board to as well, is to write a zoning amendment that can hold Northland as much as possible to something like this plan. I talked last time about the fact that they could do the triple zoning, or the triple, triplexes. I know there was a comment today about maybe letting some back in. That's okay, but, you know, I don't want to see a wall of buildings from Canton Avenue, and that's, again, it's kind of a discussion about trying to eliminate or lessen the impact of that row of buildings off that first spur road. Also on the plan, and we talked about buffer zones a lot tonight, there were two designations in Northland's presentations to the neighborhood. There's the 250 feet along Canton Avenue, which was an open space, no building zone, is how they termed it. There was also a 75... There was also a seventy-five-foot space, which is not referenced in the zoning law, in zoning by law at the moment at all, which was a no-touch zone. And I think there's an important distinction. It was clearly Northland's intent to go ahead and, and, build is the wrong word, develop, excavate, chop down trees within that two-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer. They were going to build septic systems if they needed those, they were going to build drainage retention, they were going to do a lot of different things. So we should expect within that area, up to that seventy-five feet, that every tree in there is cut down unless it's specifically identified as being saved. If you look at that plan, there are four dots along the current road for Casey Farm. Those indicate the four trees that would be saved in that buffer zone. And I think there were two others by the manor house, so six trees out of the, out of that entire space. So just recognize what the intent was of that buffer zone. Around Walker's house, above Walker's house on that diagram, is a stand of trees to the point where we were unable to walk through that area at the site visit. There are that many trees and that much screening between the Walcott Trail and the development. If, again, the same definition is used and the intent of the, the buffer zone there, I would anticipate seeing the large, most of those trees being taken down. There's nothing of very significance, there's just a lot of them. A lot of six-inch maybe trees, but just, you know, hundreds of them, thousands of them. So I think for the bylaw, I think it would be appropriate to not only continue clarity and specificity around the, the buffer zone, but also introduce into the zoning bylaw the sixty-five, or the seventy-five, or a hundred-foot even, no-touch zone, or different classifications, it doesn't have to be no-touch, but it could be more natural in some way. And I would like to see that extended not only along the front of the property, but along Walcott Trail and the DCR land in the back. And I'm sure the abutters on Carberry would, would be interested as well. As we hit the development agreement, I, I walked in with this going to be my first comment. I was hoping to propose to the board that a development agreement requirement could be put into the bylaws. Not that a, a development agreement go with the bylaws, because I think that's probably premature. You're not going to get to that specificity of details until the zoning is in place and there's an actual project going forward. But I was hoping that somehow the town or this board would be a party to that agreement. Based on the conversations earlier, I'm confused or uncertain who would be the parties to that agreement. I know Northland would be, but, but I, I don't understand who would hold Northland to, to meeting with that agreement. The homeowners association would love to be a party to that or the, the development of that agreement and participation and participation in the monitoring, but I don't think we carry nearly enough weight or influence to, to be kind of an enforcement body. So we'd be looking for some town body to, to do that and help that with this. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, follow-up from last week?
All set, thanks. All right, Mr. Corcoran, you're up.
Thank you. So, thank you for your hard work, thank you for your time. And I think, no question, the, the part of the discussion is framed about what's also possible here. Forty-B has driven the land value and it's driven how a development would be developed, done to achieve, to meet the land values that are prescribed as part of that process. I mean, forty, land values are defined by what you can do under the law, not by what you can do under zoning. So there's no question that that is a, that's significant and we have not shied away from the notion that if we can't arrive at a bylaw that works for the developer, then the alternative, then, then we won't go forward. With respect to that, most of the comments that we have heard or seen drafted by both Alex and by Mr. Connors are reasonably acceptable, subject to some more closer look at the detail. The one significant issue that I, that we need to hold on to at the moment until we have further clarity on our ability to produce affordable units off-site is that we're going to hold on to sixty-four units. Fifty-eight market rate units is the number of market rate units that will be developed, unless there's a buy-down. We're happy to, it's interesting that Mr. Smith talked about in some other entity in negotiation with Mr. Dolly about a potential buy-down of units. I have no idea who that is because that conversation hasn't happened. No one has come forward to us and said, I have money and I'm prepared to buy down units. We have until special permits issued, I suppose, to reduce the unit count to forty-four. In accordance with that, if someone wants to buy down that unit, and we're wide open and willing to do it, we've made that clear to Mr. Smith and others, that we are willing, ready, willing and able to accept a significant payment to buy down units to forty-four units. And we'll adjust the plan tomorrow if that, if there's a real set of dollars on the table, ready to go. We won't waste time pursuing fifty-eight unit plan, we'll drop it in a heartbeat. But until we know that we can manage the risk of delivering six affordable units in ways that we anticipate would be required by town meeting, not necessarily as drafted in the bylaw. And we need to hold on to the ability to produce fifty-eight market rate units on-site. And if we have to add six affordables or some number of affordables on-site, we'll do it. We won't adjust the physical layout of the plan, we may turn ones into twos, maybe make twos, threes, do it within the, within layout of the roadway and the, and the current layout of buildings without increasing any of the setbacks, impacts with respect to setbacks. We do have a meeting that's being set up next week with, I think, the town administrator, town treasurer, the planning department to drill into the, a plan that we think is achievable in terms of purchasing properties and repurposing them for purposes of affordability. We know that the town was in land court today with a property that is subject to tax title, that perhaps a deal could be struck where the developer could fund a deal with the, with that interested party and some number of units could be proposed for that site. And, and my conversation this morning with Jack Dolly was that he's anxious to get going on that. If that is a real part of the plan, we want to be able to present a, a good plan to town meeting. And if we get a good plan and we are confident in that plan, then I think we can come back and revisit the total number of units on-site. I'm leery of the notion of buying, making a payment to the town because I have heard from the members of the Affordable Housing Trust that they don't want money. They want a production of units and they want the units to be produced at the same rate as units on the site. So, you know, cash is easy, it'd be easy for the developer. I'm not sure that that would, that that is a provision that would survive an amendment on the floor of town meeting. And, you know, just think back to the, the town meeting debate on the St. Pius property. The most significant issue was whether we were going to increase the percentage of affordability from ten to twelve and a half to require an additional unit. We held firm. And I think Jack would have walked if the town, if the town had voted to increase the percentage of affordability. Asking Jack to take the risk of, of reducing six market rate units is a five-to-six million dollar risk that he is not willing to accept. So that is an important, important consideration in terms of where this board nets out on how it does its development. And the issue of, the, the concept of managing the delivery of affordables and how they get the, delivered and how it gets presented to town meeting and how it gets accepted by town meeting is not insignificant. Joe Sloan spoke at the last meeting about what, what does it mean to say that there are properties that may be distressed in other neighborhoods? What does it mean to be identifying other properties in other parts of town with respect to the, to the provision of affordables? What we think we mean is that, you know, the, the dwelling unit that had a reverse mortgage and the woman died and there's no one paying the mortgage and is now vacant and has been vacant for several years and sits as a nice little, you know, nice little house on a corner lot, could be purchased with a plan with the town, repurposed and sold as an affordable unit, as affordable, as an affordable house. And there are properties like that all over town. I know of a, of a half a dozen, just in preliminary conversations with, with Mr. McAuliffe and what the town knows about those properties. They're spread out. We're not talking about taking, putting six units in one location. We're really talking about single-family homes or, or two families converting to condos for sale. Those types of things where you already have a building, you already have, you've had a neighbor and you'd be selling those units to teachers, firefighters, police officers, other young families moving into town that look like the rest of people in town. And if we can get there and if we're confident that we can get there, then I think we'll be back to you through the town, through the public hearing process to say, okay, we're willing to drop the number of on-site. But that's a very, very, you know, affordability is the third rail in this town in many ways. And it's, it, it has to be managed and communicated very effectively and very carefully. And from the developer's perspective, there's a significant risk associated with doing anything other than just simply building six units on, on the site. We think it's a better plan, it's a better approach, it helps the neighborhood, but that's the way it is. So that's my most significant comment.
I'm going to respond to that, just because I think it's important before it gets diluted. I think there's two, two counters to what you were just saying. I mean, one is, you know, sixty-four units is going to create tremendous backlash from your abutters. And they're going to be backlash against this board and backlash against town meeting. So I just ask you to contemplate that, that risk because at, at some point, this board and, and town meeting are going to hear that, that concern as well. And the other point I raise is, you know, this board has, I was, I was concerned about off-site and I mentioned that at the last meeting, until I, until you raised the idea that we have too much affordable housing dedicated to the age-restricted population already. I think you risk the same argument at town meeting. I think you risk the same argument that we don't need any more age-restricted housing that, that's affordable. So I, I, I understand your position and I, I think we'll, we'll all think about it and talk about it at the next meeting, but I'm not convinced that you don't have equal or greater risks on the other side of the argument as well.
We might. And at the end of the day, we want to get, we want to get to this plan or something less if there's an opportunity to buy it down.
I understand.
That's the idea.
Well, you want to get to the yes at town meeting, that's what you really want.
And we need to get, everybody needs to get to yes at town meeting because if we don't get to yes at town meeting, then the property gets blown up.
Getting to yes, I, I mean, the, the point is that we think fifty-eight is the way to get to yes at town meeting. And if you have this zoning saying fifty-eight and create six affordables or pay for them, then, you know, once the zoning passes, you try and do it. And if you can't do it, then you don't proceed under the zoning. I mean, it, it, it does seem to me that we seem to get, fifty-eight seems to be a number that can be worked with and it may be the number that we need to get this past town meeting. And then if it doesn't pass town meeting or if the developer says they can't do it, then the developer still has options.
I'm raising the issue.
We're raising the other concern.
And I know you're raising the other concerns and between us, I'm confident that we'll come to an outcome that works and I'm confident that we'll be back and we'll say fifty-eight's acceptable. But as I sit here today with the analysis that we've done today, without having effectively come up with a plan with representatives of the town, we've never said that we will get to fifty-eight and that's it. We've always said, here's the plan with fifty-eight. It assumes that we can get to yes on the provision of affordables in other locations in town. And we've, and we've always represented it that way.
So have, Brian, have you had any conversations with the, it's the Affordable Housing?
The members of the Affordable Housing Trust, we met with them October, November at the request, at the suggestion of some representing the neighborhood that maybe this is a way to reduce unit count and achieve the goals of the town from an affordability perspective. We met with, I think, all of the members. One member wasn't there, but Tom Callahan and I forget the other members, were all there. They, they acknowledged that the, that the proper goal for providing affordability is that we, we don't need any more age-restricted. Enough, let's focus on young families and young couples.
So why was it that cash wouldn't assist in acquiring just as you would be able to acquire? Why couldn't the town, if they're foreclosing on a property, why couldn't they use the funds in that manner, then, ourselves as a town?
I think the town could. I think that the separate question is, will the town and does the town, you know?
He's an administrator.
There's a lot of administrative issues.
We need a developer to do it.
Well,
And you go.
The town can't do it.
But why do we have a trust that can't accept money?
We don't. We don't, we have a trust that accepts money, but then how do you deploy the money? Well, it doesn't know how to deploy it, that's how, that's the problem.
And they're going to have
You know when they'll figure out how to deploy it?
When they get the money.
They have money. Right now, they have five thousand dollars, they're not too worried, or fifty thousand dollars.
But my point is, if, if it's too much of a risk to say you're going to find and buy foreclosed property, why wouldn't having funds put into the trust, which are to be used for the same purpose? What's the downside of that, other than we don't have anybody in the trust who can do?
There isn't one. And they'll figure it out once they have the cash.
One of the big, big, big issues with respect to that, if it's a, if you're in a, if a property is in distress because it's in some form of bank foreclosure, nobody can talk to the, to the bank. The bank, the bank can't agree to sell it unless it has permission from the mortgager, who's the owner. And often, that person's in the wind. And in one case in town, that person is dead and the only heir is in Canada. And came down, looked at the property, looked at the amount of money that was due in the mortgage, threw the keys back in the door and went back to Canada. So there is no, unless the developer is participating with the town to make those purchases and then turn those properties around, I'm not sure that the town has the ability to effectively take on that process. And so we need to spend some time, you know, with Jim McAuliffe and with Mike Dennehy and with Bill and Tim and see whether or not there's a, and maybe town council, to see whether or not there's a structure to a plan that can be put in place. Otherwise, we can go around and look for properties that might be on the market, buy them, turn around and resell them. And that's a possibility and maybe that's part of the plan. Tell them.
Well, you're talking about bank foreclosed or tax foreclosed properties?
Either. There's not that, there's, there aren't six tax foreclosed properties out there.
How many are there at any one time?
And they do have the right, they do have the right to redeem because the, they're just foreclosing on the taxes, that's a small number. And when the threat is there, they can come back and redeem and then you lose the ability to buy it. So there has to be a mechanism and an approach that actually gets from identifying a property, identifying how you might buy it, who is the entity that makes, that, that makes the inquiry and the conversation because if it's, if it's a private developer, they won't talk to you, but maybe the town can because it's the town and the town has its taxing authority. And those are, there's issues that need to be addressed. I think we can do it. We're, we want to get, we've requested the meeting next week so that we can advance that conversation. We do know that the issue of managing to fifty-eight is an important issue, but, and I just just, but I'm highlighting it because it is not, it's not a simple issue. And I think maybe, maybe we must add unless, I just want to comment further on that, on that issue. The issue of a development agreement was our idea in the first place, so we're aware of it in other jurisdictions that if there are details to be baked that don't make themselves their way into a bylaw and it's hard to do that in a bylaw setting because those issues might continue to pop over the next little while, we're happy to work on a development agreement. We're happy to request that the selectmen sign it on behalf of the town. The selectmen would have the, the ability to enforce it on behalf of the town and on behalf of the neighbors. That's just a, I guess that's a political question, but we're certainly willing to advance that, that conversation if that's appropriate. You know, we, I did, we did, I did shout from the hinterlands the question of whether or not we would fund any further traffic studies. We did produce a traffic analysis based on comparison of, we did traffic counts at four locations, two in town, two in Belmont of similarly situated age-restricted or age targeted developments. We measured those against expected traffic for 22-lot subdivision and 33-lot subdivision. We think that the impacts are, the numbers speak for themselves, but they're, they're favorable. My guess is, and I'll be happy to reach out to Mast Dot and my contacts at Mast Dot to see if they have any recent traffic numbers that reflect traffic on Route 138 on Blue Hill Avenue. I know that they are, they're willing to look at that, they are willing to engage. And we had offered to, as part of the development, to look at traffic signal sequencing at Royal Street in Canton and at Blue Hills, Blue Hill Ave, Canton Ave to suggest improvements that could be implemented by Mast Dot. It's, Route 138 is a state highway, it's their jurisdiction. The town can make suggestions, we can make suggestions, but the town, but Mass Highway, Mast Dot is the entity that controls what and whether things get done. But I do know that they've looked at three other intersections that aren't currently signalized for the purpose of maybe signalizing, so they've got recent traffic counts out there that I think they can share with us.
Tim, can you confirm, I think we did this the last one too, but can you confirm that their traffic analysis is on those websites?
If it's not, I'll, I'll give it to. I did email it to some of the neighbors a couple of weeks ago. There was, they, I, we had handed it out at a neighbor meeting, but not everybody had gotten it, so we did hand it out. And I, and I know that all of you have copies. I guess I understand the question about garage doors unless concerned about them if they're not visible from outside the property. I think, I think people are reacting to what's the current state of construction at Windmere? Woodmere, Windmere? And all of that's visible from Brush Hill Road? Separate question is if it's not visible from Canton Avenue and not visible from the Walcott Trail, is that really a, is that really a significant issue? I'd just throw that out as a question.
Let's take that under advisement and talk about it at the next meeting.
Yeah, and we're, and, and, you know, one of the things that Jack is doing is he's retained a new architect, it's a different architect, it's someone that's got a real historic bent with CBT architects, I forget the name. They've done work for, recent work for Milton Academy and some of the work there that, and how new buildings there were blended into a historic campus and they're very, you know, they're pretty good about how they, will be, they'll be responsive, but I, but the 3D component of Jack's, I know he was in Florida today at a trade convention and he met somebody who can do it. And he's, he was very impressed with what he can do, so he's going to, he's happy to produce it and that would be an important, particularly a property like this which has such dramatic changes in elevation, he's happy to include that. The issue of public access, we do provide for a walking path along the frontage of the property inside the roadway, inside the, the stone wall along Canton Avenue. I, I don't think, we're, you know, it's potentially part of a development agreement that Jack is, you know, I don't think it's an issue with respect to allowing pedestrian and bicycle access up through the property. There will be walking trails divine, you know, and designed as an amenity for the unit owners and as well as for public access. DCR is a logical entity to take title to the conservation restriction. My understanding is that they restrict public access from dawn to dusk. And that's, and that, so whatever the public access requirements or elements would be, I think would be really up to the decision of the entity that's receiving the CR because they're, they're the ones that are going to define who and when and how and why you could do it. I, I don't think we have a problem with submitting an agreement with an, with an entity with respect to CR. This goes to one of Mr. Connors's comments, but we would not agree to do it as a condition of filing the application. I think he highlighted in his own comments that if you end up not getting such an agreement and you have to do it with the condominium association, is that, would that be the, the thing that would kill this deal and move it into another, something else because we couldn't get, get an agreement with a, with a, some other entity to take title to the, so I would just throw that out and that's not, that's, you know, that would be inconsistent with other requirements on our bylaws. I think the attached cluster provision, the cluster provision provide for provision of open space by condominiums, you know, a third-party entity, the conservation commission or a conserva, or a third-party, the condominium association, subject to rules and requirements. we are, we have no issues with, with the need to perform a traffic study during the, during, as a requirement with a peer review. I think that's, would be except, expected. I think logically you'll find that in the afternoon peak hour, this is operating at an F and, but one of the provisions that would be that we will compare that to other uses that could be allowed on the site because, and one of the uses being a more dense use. You do have to weigh that, the relative impacts. So yes, we're going to add more traffic. Whatever goes there is going to add more traffic. Question is, is we adding, how much traffic are we adding and is there other reasonable mitigation measures that can be imposed on the developer? You know, do you look at stop signs along Canton Avenue or do you do, you know, you do other traffic calming measures and you assist the town in looking more broadly at its traffic issues, those types of things? I'm not sure you can do much out there to mitigate things because you have a, you have a busy roadway and you have a busy state highway. I'm not sure you can do much physically to mitigate impacts, but, you know, we can certainly look at that. And so I think most of what Mr. Connors has suggested as sort of detailed items to be requested in a traffic study are fine. We're looking at those more carefully. I might have some specific comments if it's the board's desire to incorporate something like that. And I think the issue of a tree study is fine as well and I, and I agree, I, I agree, you know, either in, in, I think it's difficult in the zoning, in the bylaw, but certainly within a development agreement to talk specifically about these no-touch, no-whatever areas. There's no, I mean, I heard Ted Phillips suggest that maybe we'll be taking down a whole bunch of trees between the Walcott path and the, the units. I don't see any reason why we'd go anywhere near that. There's no intention to go near that. That's a natural buffer that, you know, it's a thick, dense thicket and it ought to stay the way it is and is, why would we spend the money to do anything other than leave it the way it is? So, you know, maybe there's, there's some definitional things that can be done with respect to no-touch zones. We do need to be careful to address issues of underground utility. There's, I know that, although he didn't highlight it, Mr. Connors has suggested that the property needs to be served by sewer. I would suggest that it can be served by sewer or septic. We're not going to agree to be, to mandate sewer if septic is a feasible alternative. And if it can be reasonably located on the site. Underground utility, stormwater management, sewer, septic, excuse me, will be necessary and potentially will need to be done, particularly within the KC Farm Meadow outside of the 200, of the 7500, the 75-foot no-touch zone. Question whether we need to do it. We'll need to do it to some degree within the 250-foot setback because you have to, you're going to have to account for stormwater management on the new roadway as it comes between. So that's all subject, obviously, to the specific utility plan, stormwater management plan and the like.
Bill, is it allowed to have septic in this type of cluster development?
Yes.
And is, each one has to have their own?
No.
No.
The central system?
You could have one or you could have multiple joint systems.
Well, I mean, you have to take trees down for that, so I think that's an important concern, issue, yeah.
There's meadows and.
There may be some piping through two areas and.
Meadows are really good for putting those fields.
Well, that's going to be an important factor in how much you can preserve of the open space, I think.
It'll be allowed, an allowed use within the open space. Questions whether it's preserved as trees or whether it's re-landscaped as fields and meadow.
I don't think you can put trees over the septic field.
You can't.
Can't put trees, but you can put fields and meadows.
So the question is, how much fields and meadow replaces trees though? That's a pretty significant change to open space.
But they can be undulating.
Understood, but they, it's still a significant change, which my understanding was that the open space was to be preserved as, with as least as interruption as possible.
And that's the intent.
So between, but between you do this, the septic and the storm, how much of that green is really undisturbed green?
Most.
So that would be the, the thing that we'd have to understand.
Yeah, and that'll be done as part of the site plan.
I don't understand why you'd go septic here.
There's also, you know, we, we just heard a recommendation from one of the other people from the community suggesting a potential no-touch buffer all the way around the property or around significant portions of the property. So that may help, that may be another tool that we use as we continue to wrestle with that and maybe we can't, maybe we don't require sewer, but we make it very palatable based on how we draft the language.
And they wouldn't want to put a sewer in. So sewers, multiple-use septic systems, everyone throws stuff into them and they don't work very well.
What are you saying? Sewers, sewers better?
Sewer is better.
No, I agree. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page there.
A septic system, a common septic system is, is people don't have a sense of ownership and they abuse them something fierce.
I'm surprised they're allowed.
The sewer.
Many places wouldn't allow a septic in this kind of a development.
There's a threshold, but based on gallons per day. The sewer would disturb a lot less.
Lot less.
That's.
Yeah, but it's got to come around the corner and up the hill.
This is the first I've heard of septic.
We've been talking about septic since day one.
And I miss it every time.
These standards that they have to reach.
Well, I think it disturbs, is going to disturb a lot of the land, so I have to see that it's not.
Mr., what else do you have? Because we have another whole hearing to get through.
Yeah, I know. I think that's, I mean, that's, that's enough. Obviously pay careful attention to the drafting and, you know, it obviously has to work from our perspective and I hope if there's someone out there that's got real money that they come to the table.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we done with this one?
I think so. We're going to move on to the next, so thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
Can you continue on the 20 minutes or?
Yes, we'll be talking about this again on the 26th. It will just remain on the agenda now.
Six.
But we will be speaking about it on the 26th.
Can I refuse?
Please don't. Where do we want to start on the next one? I think we're.
I made some suggestive changes in my draft, but not many because I thought my draft was a good draft.
Reasonable statement.
Self-serving, but reasonable.
Well, I think we should have a quick conversation about, about, well, Mr. Quirk, let's actually start with Mr. Quirk in this time, since we're going that route. I'd love to hear his, love to hear his feedback because I think it feels late to plunge through a line by line tonight of this one unless you're, unless you're ready and willing and able.
I think that hearing his major complaints is probably a good way to do it.
Yes, okay, sounds good. All right, let's go to you for, to start.
Well, I, again, I want to thank you for your good work. I made some comments several weeks ago when you were first considering Alex's draft of the bylaw. And I suggested that I had, we had concerns about density and flexibility of site planning for the building and building occupancy and that they need to be loosened up somewhat substantially or I think we're wasting our time. We understand concerns of handful of, what we think is a handful of people in the neighborhood and, and some others and Alex and particularly Mike about density and traffic, but just like I own the hammer, Carberry Property, we own the hammer this location as well. And I think Tom Callahan suggests it best that 80 units is probably what would be the alternative and 80 times 1,000 square feet per unit plus or minus is a pretty big, pretty dense building with pretty significant impact. We need, we, we agree that we would provide a market with a minimum of 10,000 square feet. We can agree that we would have maximum amount of square footage for commercial for 14,000 square feet. We need 24 units of housing if we're going to achieve a reasonable allocation for affordability. It's an important consideration. I've spoken to some of those who have supported, changed position based on the provision of housing and, and it's got to be a meaningful provision of housing in providing one or two, one unit, you know, if you have 12 units and one of those is affordable, you're not doing much to provide affordability. So 24 units with 25% affordability and all for rent, small units that would only be occupied by young couples or young singles would provide, would achieve that goal and would not have significant impact. The only requirements, I think, in terms of development should be that there is a market and residential. That there needs to be the option to build residential above the market on one floor and that you can go to three stories in a second smaller building if that second smaller building is developed. Beyond that, there needs to be flexibility in the site plan. Developer and development team should determine how buildings are sited, how they relate to each other, how they relate to parking, how they relate to the front, how they relate to the rear, how they relate to the sides, subject to setbacks. So my hope is that board can agree to develop a bylaw that allows that. If you can't, I understand that, I'll go get 200 signatures and I'll call for a special town meeting. If you can't, I understand that, I'll go get 200 signatures and I'll call for a special town meeting within the annual. And you'll have, the public hearing will be on that bylaw. I don't want to waste any time, I don't want to waste the board's time, I don't want to waste our time otherwise. If I can't get 200 signatures, then that, then obviously that will send its own message. But I'm confident that I can get 200 signatures within the four precincts that surround this site.
I thought you only needed 100.
I think it's 200 to call for a special town meeting. As I read, as I read the statute.
All right, well.
And, and I can't file it until 45 days before the date that is called, so that gives me till mid-March to file. As I read the law, I've got to communicate with town council to make sure that that's otherwise true. So I think that, I, I understand we're asking for, for density, but I think we have to have density because that's the only way the, the development is going to be successful, or has a chance to be successful. If it's too small, if it's too tightly drawn, I don't have a chance, so we're wasting our time proving something. I'll leave it at that.
So Alex, I did, I took the liberty of doing a quick economic analysis on what we've, what you've written, and I want to make sure I captured it correctly. I think we were saying 14,000 square feet of, of market and then a separate building, one.
10 to 14 of market.
I'm sorry?
10 to 14.
10 to 14, okay, I ran it at 14, and then I looked at 6,000, six units of residential and then a potential of 12 units of residential.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to see if, where Mr., you know, if Mr. Corcoran's statements were adequate. And I assumed a land cost of $2 million, sort of just figuring.
Oh, they own the land.
I understand, but they've already said they're not the developer, so I'm trying to figure out if we can have a developer.
You assume they're going to sell it for $2 million.
Exactly, so can the developer act, will a developer take the risk? So, Tim, you can just go to scenario one, please. So what I did here, this is a very back-of-the-envelope, pro forma style look at what I would, what I would, how I would run this very quickly. But essentially, I looked at income of grocery, I assumed a $30 per square foot rent for a grocery store here. I assumed six apartment units, I talked to someone in my field that, that recommended the per-square-foot rent that I used, which is $34 a square foot. That would calculate roughly to, on a 1,200-square-foot unit, it's 275 a foot. So it comes out to roughly $2,400 a month for a two-bedroom, a little higher probably. I did put in an affordable unit based on a 10% calculation, 6.6 units rounding to one unit. And I just did a, I assumed that based on $140,000 purchase price, I sort of figured out what that would translate into for a mortgage payment, and then use $750 a month for the rent. So I backed out the $25,000 loss on that one unit. I applied expenses, the expenses get reimbursed by the retail, so that's what this is. You have expenses of $10 a foot on the property, the retail reimburses most of it, but you do have to pay for the apartment expenses. And then I valued that using a standard calculation of a 7% cap rate, you could move that around if you wanted to, to get it a little higher, a little lower. Then I put my costs in, I assumed sort of costs that I've used in my work for a long time. $250 would include your hard costs, your hard costs, your soft costs, your permitting costs. That would be to build your retail building, $100 a foot for, for the cost to build out the inside of the store for the supermarket, which at a $30 rent, I think would be required. Using $175,000 a foot, a unit, which is again a cost I got from someone in our industry for units that are built in a residential building only, not over retail. Two-bedroom units are about $15,000 more than $175,000, so that's where that number is coming from. I threw an architectural adder on for square foot for the design requirements we have, and I got to total cost of about $8.5 million. So these numbers can obviously be moved around, challenged, and I'm, we can do that here, we can do it on your own, however. But ultimately, you know, you, you get about a 6% overall return, you do 6% cash-on-cash. On its face, that's not a terrible investment, except there's a lot of development risk. The biggest challenge I had is that you're leaving the gate, but, you know, coming out of the gate, you haven't made your money back, you've actually lost money on day one. So I just wanted to kind of test it out, and I think it is, it's a little tight to get it done, it's a lot tight to get it done, to make the numbers work, I think, at the, at the density that we're, we're showing in the proposal. Scenario two went up to 12 units. And all the same calculations were the same, Tim, you can just scroll down. The good news is you get up to an 8% return, which starts to get you a lot into a much better situation where someone would actually take a development risk for sure. We just have to really work on that value creation piece to make sure people are coming out of the gate having created some value for themselves. So you're getting closer on that scenario two to, to really get there. I very quickly just tried to modify, listening to what Mr. Corcoran was saying, to look at a 14,000-square-foot market with 24 apartment units. And I, I came out with around a 9% return with the $200,000 cash flow at the beginning, or $200 value creation at the beginning. So, so I just wanted to share that with everybody, just to sort of vet out economic realities of the project. I think, you know, most developers are going to want an 8% to 12% return to take the risk, and that would be on their IRR on an unleveraged basis, in my experience. The cash-on-cash is kind of, you know, less important, that's whatever you can make in the stock market these days, so people are willing to take a bit less, obviously. So just wanted to share that with the board.
Oh, you're saying that development of a market is infeasible?
I think a development of a market on its own is infeasible. If you put no residential on a site, I think it's, I think you couldn't do it.
So you say that you need a development 50% larger than the Fruit Center to make this work, on a lot that's smaller than the Fruit Center.
I'm, I'm just trying to deal with the economic realities. The, the challenge.
What about parking?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't even look at the design, I mean, I just, I didn't look to see if you could fit at all. I just wanted to look at the economics just quickly, I could do that quickly in a, you know, a couple hours last night. You know, the, a lot of what's driving these requirements these days are, and it's, it's happening everywhere, it's, it's land costs, and then it's the construction cost. And those two things are pushing us to have to, to build more and more to make any of these projects work. So I don't think you can feasibly build a 14,000-square-foot market here and make any money. That's just my, that's my, my take on it. If you zeroed, zeroed out everything else, else here and just built the market, I'll just quickly do it, just to kind of look and see what happens.
How many residential units are you saying that you need?
I was, I actually got to.
What got you to 8%?
I got to 24 last night.
To get to 8%?
Let me see if I got any lower than that. At, at scenario five was.
Did that include affordables?
Yes.
Yeah, adjustment for affordable.
That includes an adjustment for affordable. Assuming that they have to build 10% of them affordable, that would include that. Yeah, I was at, you know, you got to 20, 20, about 24 units gets you to an 8% return. That's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting to, very quickly, and this is back of the envelope, so I'm happy to do a little more work on this next time, you know, if, if the board's interested in it, I didn't want to spend a lot more time on it. But until I knew if, if it mattered to anybody, but let me just finish quickly looking at that, Alex, to see if. If a market is reasonable. Yeah, a market is, you lose money.
So I guess my view is that if a market of 10,000 square feet and additional retail space of 10,000 square feet is a loser. And the only way you get to be a winner is by adding 24 rental units. But it's far too dense for the property. And my view is that a subsidizing agency would probably think 40 units, 40B units, just given the characteristics of the site. And if they could make that work with a $2 million land cost, that would be, that would be interesting. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a bad, it wouldn't be a bad result.
We'd get some inventory on our, on our books.
We have 400 and how many units to go before we get 10% subsidized housing?
We're at 4.9%.
Number of units, Bill?
5.03.
Number of units?
Anyway, it's about 400 units to get to where we need to be.
400 plus units.
To get to, and you know, I think hopefully we get at least enough units to get a delay.
No, I don't think that, I, you see, the problem with the delay is that we have our, our plan in place, but we haven't met last year's goal.
Understood, that's what I'm saying, so I'm.
And that's why, that's why, if at some future year we meet a goal, we met the first goal.
This one, I'm saying I would hope to get enough units to at least get that goal for one year.
We wouldn't get a delay because we missed, we missed.
We wouldn't get it on this one, you're right.
We missed last year at 40.
We missed last year, and so the delay is, even if we've got enough units this year, we wouldn't get a delay.
Understood, I was just suggesting, if this went to 40B, hopefully we could get enough units out of it to meet our obligation to get a delay the following year.
We wouldn't get a delay, though, because we missed last year.
Oh, so we miss it forever now?
So I think we miss it forever.
Oh, just two years, okay, okay, I didn't know that, I didn't know that piece of it, okay, that's good to know.
That is my understanding.
What happened to the second commercial building, yeah, the bank building?
I actually ran a scenario that had the units and the bank building too, but the, the, I didn't show it to you here tonight, but it's, you know, if you threw another bank building in, we could look at that. You know, we could certainly look at a 14,000-square-foot market with 12 units and 2,000 square feet of retail, and we just see what that does.
Well, the beauty of, the beauty of a bank building is it doesn't draw traffic.
Right. I'm going to actually boost the rent on the bank, because banks pay a lot of money, so I'm going to boost the rent.
Bring down your residential units?
That's what I'm trying to, yeah, let's see if that works. I'll even give you, Alex, let's go really wild here, let's say, we don't have to build a building, the bank will build it itself, it'll pay you a good land rent, ground lease.
Let's not go too crazy.
Somebody's got to build the units upstairs.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm leaving the units, I'm leaving those units, and don't worry.
I mean, they got to be built by somebody, I don't know if the bank's going to build them.
No, no, we're building, I'm building that building, I'm just not building the retail for the bank. Try to make this work. Mike, that's interesting, that, you put the bank building in, or you put a ground lease in for a bank on 12 units, and you're there. You create, you know, $2 million of value out of the gate, you get an 8% cash flow, and you're at a 10% IRR. So how would you feel about that, Alex? 12 units, 14,000 square, up to a 14,000-square-foot market and a small pad building.
Well, I mean, if they have, there is, how much spaces would that take?
How many what, parking spaces?
No, for the bank.
Ground space.
What would it round?
Call it 2,000 square feet.
The only question with the bank is it chews up parking space.
2,000 square foot.
On single floor?
Yeah, it's a small building.
Just a branch, you know, they're just, they were going to four, now they're back down to 1,600 again, they jump all over the place. So you're at 2,000, just from a footprint, you're at 2,000, then you're at 14,000 for the grocer, and you're at 6,000 over 6,000 for the retail, for the units. You need.
But the, the ground space is just the 14,000 and the 2,000.
Yeah, right, and then the 6,000 for the.
Well, they're all going.
Well, I would think you were just doing a separate, I'm doing a separate residential building, worst case.
I thought all the residential was going either above the bank or above the market.
Let's assume.
I think the option should be there to put it over.
Fine, so yeah, okay, so you'll just say 6,000.
That doesn't chew a parking area for parking and open space.
Well, worst case, you'd have 20,000, 22,000 square feet of building footprint, worst case, you'd have.
You know, that worst case is okay.
Yeah. So you got 60,000 square feet left, so you, 28 is 8,000 square feet.
You need, let's see, you need, let's see, you need 10 parks for that, you need 50, 70 parks for that, and you need 60, 90, oh, residential kills you. Let's say we need 60 parks and you can share some, that's 140. Because the residents aren't there during the day. I don't like it, I'm just, I'm just.
So what do you, what do you want for the residents?
At 5 o'clock, yeah, so all right, I'll do worst case, so you got to do 90 units.
1 and 1/2 pocket spots for a unit?
That's 90, that's 90 spaces.
You're not getting.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, six units, not 6,000 units, my mistake, never mind. It's 12 units, so that's.
One and 1/2, 18, 18 spots.
That's much better, okay, so 98 spots, that's 350. So that's 34,300 square feet approximately for parking, 22,000 for the building, that gets you to 56,000.
And you've got.
And then you've got.
You get to 90,000.
So you got still 30, you're still at about a third open. You feeling good about that?
A third open what?
Space.
Open space.
Well, you're, you're.
350 might also be generous, I know that's like, sort of like the course.
I'm doing worst case.
For the parking spots, 350. That includes lanes and turning lanes.
Do an industry standard, worst-case scenario here, Tim.
That that doesn't include driveway area, which you get another 70.
350 does, yeah.
Oh, okay.
18 by 9, and then you add, it's a factor to figure in the driveway, drive aisles and all that.
Includes the driveway to the drive aisles coming off of, includes that a little bit, I think there's another.
Can use 375 or whatever, but you've got enough room there.
7,200 square feet, we think, of area. So we did an analysis, just from a building area, parking area. If you did a 14,000-square-foot, if you did 15,000-square-foot building with 12,500 square feet of retail, 21-bedroom residential units, and a 24-seat restaurant. That you would need 78 parking spaces, and you'd preserve, you would do that, and the building's within 62,000 square feet of land. And you'd still have another 30,000 plus or minus.
So maybe we're going to wrestle about how much parking you need and whatnot, but you're still pretty darn close to 30% open space on that plan.
And I think that's meaningful open space, there's meaningful open space that gets preserved in front, there's meaningful open space to the rear. And it provides the opportunity for meaningful engagement of that open space with the development. So I think if you said, if you went 14 to.
A market?
14,000.
2,000 for a bank?
Yeah.
12 residents.
14,000 square foot market, 2,000 square foot retail, I don't know if we need to designate the bank, but.
I'd like to. It's likely to be a bank, because they're hot to trot, but the market.
Good.
Which inside would have.
Has to have a cafe. Component, not necessarily a coffee shop, but I think, because I think that was part of the whole activation of the.
Yeah, you could have a small sitting area like any market these days.
That's what we're talking about.
Next to your bakery. Yeah, okay.
Look, I'm being realistic, I'm just, I'm responding to what we said at the last meeting.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, yeah. It's also, you know, bank is a non-traffic generator and a coffee shop is a traffic generator, so you have to account for that from a parking perspective, so.
I think the kind of sit-down we're talking about is a component of most markets these days anyway, so it's like.
If you get a, if you get the 14,000-square-foot market, a 12,000 square feet with some additional 2,000 square feet of amenity, and then you have the separate bank building. I think the bank building probably wants to be separate, maybe, but, and so 14 plus 2.
Ground lease-wise, you're going to want to do it that way, because you need enough to build it.
Right, so, you know, that's 16,000 square feet plus 12 units. I think that's within the ballpark, I would want to hear from the housing advocates that that was enough, I think I can convince them that it is, but I think if that's what we can work to, I think we can work to.
So April's not here, and Cheryl's not, not participating, so I would, I would like to take that input if you, if you guys think that's a reasonable proposal. And look at Alex's language again, give April that feedback and have some, have a good discussion on this with the neighbors' input, let them, let them take it back, let them hear this and then bring it up.
Just from my reading, Alex can obviously speak to it better, I think, yeah, the 14,000-foot market, the 2,000-foot bank, and the 12 units almost fits into what he's written already.
Well, it works, so yeah.
The question is how, whether or not it could be configured the way I propose, and if it can't be, I'd like to know how it could be configured. Because you've, you've got. And if it can't be, I'd like to know how it could be configured, because you've, you've got the neighbors saying, we want a market, we want a cafe area, a cafe-type area. They don't actually say we want a bank, but...
Right.
And I have...
The bank might just be the, but the bank might be the economic engine that gets them what they want.
The bank may be necessary.
And it's pretty, pretty low impact.
We're told there is a resident demand for a lot of housing on this site. But interestingly, no one in town has told me about it. The only person who I've heard this from is, is Ned. And no one else has said, make sure you get that 24 units of housing into this. I think that the people I've heard from say they'd like to have a market to go to. And the residential component is something of an afterthought. That's just the information I have.
It would, you know, I know we came to something and it seems to be reasonable, it seems to me just in visualizing it, the residents, it's just, it's kind of like chaos living over the market. Living over a bank with all the action going on there, it's like...
What about the market and the bank, does that work?
Mark, the bank in the market?
What if you put, what if you put office space?
They're not going to pay enough for it.
Over the bank.
Okay, so you figured 12 residential.
I'm responding to a lot of people that said that housing was an important component of this thing.
What's she getting, she can do that?
Well, I mean, they may have, but you should have told them the right to the planning board and say it.
They came and spoke, at least two of them came and spoke.
You're going to get people, like you said, you're going to get young couples with one kid or something like that, they're going to want to...
They're not going to have kids, because they're not going to want the kids to go downstairs and play in the parking lot.
They, they might if they want them to go to the school in Milton, and that's the best they can afford in Milton.
They might take anything they got. And in fact, if, if, in any event, I think that, so 12 units, what is, uh, what's the breakdown, do you think?
All ones, 800 to 1,000 square feet. Don't, don't give any opportunity.
You make them one pluses, make them one with dens, so they're marketable.
I don't think, you know, the people who came up to you and said, we want residential all-in-ones.
Well, I will say, I mean, I will say from what we're doing right now, my, my company's doing right now, one plus den is extraordinarily marketable for...
It's a two.
Because it's a two, but it doesn't have a closet, it's a little bit smaller, it's just uncomfortable enough with two kids.
Doesn't have a window to the outside.
Right, it doesn't have a window to the outside, but it gives you that office space, it allows a, an empty nester couple to go there, or a professor from Curry to live there, or whatever. But, so they're very marketable, but one bedrooms start to be a little more challenging to market.
One and a half.
Yep. I mean, I love the all one and a half bedroom, that, that does start to really mitigate your exposure to, to kids. Some people will still do it, but it's a lot more challenging.
Putting the kid in the den, oh, come on.
Well, it's not the den, it's the size. It's the, it's the 700 to 800 square feet versus the 1,200 square feet. That's where you really start to...
I don't know, I think a lot of people...
Is it economically better to have rental property than it is to have commercial space?
Oh, yeah, office space doesn't pencil.
It's not going to pay.
It won't, because it's gross rents and they turn over every five years, they're, they're a nightmare.
I think the, so, it's not a location that's going to attract people to an office environment, because it's not surrounded by other offices and...
Oh, did you, uh, one of your prior residents of the...
Would you prefer one beds? For that reason? That could be convinced, but that's a good, that's a good answer.
But no, I'm, I'm pointing out that if people said we need affordable housing, they certainly didn't say we need a lot of one-bedroom affordable housing. They assumed that it would be family housing. I mean, that's what Tom Callahan talks about.
Well, Alex, I will, I've got a meeting with a whole lot of people next week, and we will find out what they think.
Have them, have them send us a letter.
Okay, so, I'd like to take another look at this now that we have some, some, some agreement. And we can talk about it at the next meeting.
I think that, I think that that's probably, that's probably right. We haven't, you know, we do have your financial input, and I, you're probably right on the money, but that's the only, I mean, the developer, the owner has produced no financial input whatsoever for us.
I will look at this...
And so we're relying on you to come up with what is financially feasible.
And I'm going to look at this much more carefully, I mean, I just ran this bank thing in 14 seconds, so I want to look at that a little more closely as well.
All right, you, you come up with some solid financial, and you might, since they don't seem to have a financial expert of their own that they're willing to disclose, you might offer them the, your views and see if they agree.
That's fair, I will do that ahead of the next meeting. Does anybody want to speak quickly, since you sat here?
Yes.
Okay, come on up. I need you to come up to the mic, though, please.
I'm Katie Schmidt, I'm from Precinct 1, I live on Churchill Street. And I'm just concerned that this is a little too quick here. I think it's excellent what you've provided in response to what they've provided. But we have, as you said, Alex, about the affordable housing, about the density of the land, there's a number of things that need, need attention. And not attention that's at the la, at after 10 o'clock when everybody's tired and their eyes are shutting in.
That's why we're delaying it.
They're shutting down, thank you, and I appreciate you doing this.
I want to be very clear, we're not agreeing to this. I think we're agreeing to think about this, and, but we're, we're too tired to do it right now.
Yes, but you, this is progress, because things have been addressed and they're on the table.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Joe Sloan.
Thank you, Joe Sloan from Concord Ave. As I had mentioned the last time I, that I spoke to you, I had submitted a document with a bunch of little specific details, and this isn't the time to go back through those line by line. But I, I would just reinforce something that I've heard a number of people say who have had a chance to look at the draft that you voted to, to at least put forward as a placeholder. I've heard from a number of people who aren't local to, to this particular spot, but people from other parts of town who, like from East Milton and from, from Hillside Street, two people that, that got in touch that urged zoning language that was consistent across the board. So if there's language, for instance, about what might be required for impact studies, traffic studies, that kind of a thing, for one particular set of zoning, that, that same language be applicable in another place. So for instance, the traffic study language that's, that's in this current draft that you have, that you're working before it, is, is, is a little bit lighter than some of the other language that's, that appears in other, in other places. So I just bring that forward, that, that as you work on this, that it reflects zoning that applies in other places across the board. And then a question to process, or a point to process going forward. At some point in the not-too-distant future, you will need to have a public hearing on, on the draft that you come, come closest to putting forward to, to town meeting. One of the biggest concerns, and Mr. Corcoran addressed this at a number of points along the way, one of the biggest concerns that came up over the course of the meetings that were held over the summer months at the Milton Library was people who, people who were concerned about what was being put forward in zoning and what they had in their minds as an impression of what they wanted to see at the site. And a number of people spoke over the course of those meetings to having a concern about what they envisioned for the site, what was put forward as a concept for the site, and what the zoning was, was going to be like, and would those two things match up? Or would people come forward with, with a majority of support to put some zoning in place and then see a result that was very different from what they expected? And so I think that with, with the number of scenarios that Tim put together that were looked at, and we saw, I saw a couple of different ones tonight that were put forward, I think that heading toward the public hearing process, it's going to be very important to be very clear to the public what exactly the planning board is going to put forward. And I have stressed the idea of visuals. The public has been looking at visuals, renderings, and both, both renderings from a, from a perspective view and plan renderings that have been on the town website for months and months. And so I think people have started to formulate a visual impression of what they have thought all along the zoning would, would be like. The draft zoning that Alex put together and you've been working on most recently is, it's a very different vision of what that site would look like from the street than the visuals that people have been looking at for almost a year. So for instance, in those five different scenarios that are put forward, the, the main building that is closest to the parkway in, I think, two of those scenarios, it's a one-story building, and in three of the scenarios, it's a three-story building. And that's a very different visual. And so I think, I think again, it will be important to help people understand, you know, those people that don't enjoy coming to planning board meetings as much as I do, and reading the details and looking at all of the language. There's a lot of folks that have a, a different view of what this is like. And it's less about the, it's less about the words that are in the zoning, and it's more about the impression that they have for the site. So I, I just think that that's going to be very important to kind of narrow it down so that the public hearing process isn't chaos, that people don't have this tremendously wide variety of impressions of what they think is going to happen through the zoning there. Because I think that, that there is agreement, that people want to see success. People want to see a good result, whatever that result is. And I think it's going to be much more difficult to get to the result if the vision isn't, isn't refined and defined in a better way.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, can I just address a couple of things there?
Sure.
I, I just want to be clear, and I'm glad you looked at my pictures, it's good. The, the purpose of those diagrams, and, and I, I want to make sure I reiterate this at every point, is to, the very most basic and most coarse visualization of the, the language in, in zoning. So it's literally, if we're going to have a 60-foot setback here, here, and here, and a building is going to be this size, can that literally fit in the space? Not that the building is going to be a certain shape, not that it's going to be oriented in, in a certain way, but like literally, can we fit these boxes in this larger box? So I always want to stress that those diagrams are as, as diagrammatic as they get. You know, and, and then with regard to, and I know this came up at, at the last meeting, in terms of, you know, there was, there was certain renderings that have sort of came out at the beginning of the process that are still around and people sort of have an image of that, but the actual, the zoning language has kind of evolved from that. I'm not going to speak for, for the applicant, although I know that they've said in the past that sort of, they've acknowledged that it's changed. You know, we weigh the sort of competing interests of, yes, we want people to have as accurate a picture of the current thinking of the zoning as possible, but also, you know, that stuff is up on our, our website as an archive of, of this process. And so I would also sort of just reiterate that, you know, the stuff that was discussed, you know, maybe six months ago, has evolved over the course of the six months, so, you know, and, and, you know, the applicant can speak to whether there's going to be, you know, new renderings based on new zoning or not. But I think we've kind of, and, and, you know, it's the board's call, you know, we, we want to keep that stuff up on the website as an archive of what the discussion has been.
I also wanted to add very quickly, this is a little different than what we've done in the past, because the applicant is not going to be the developer. They've made it very clear they're selling. That's why I did this financial analysis, because if they were the developer, they could build less. But if they're going to have to, if they're going to put a land basis on it, that's what's starting to generate that need for density. So we need to design a zoning bylaw that gets us very, gets, gets a very clear picture of what, what the community wants and, and puts very stringent parameters around it. But I think you want to be careful that you don't zone yourself out of some good creative partnership with a good developer. The guy that, that owns this land today, I think he has the best intentions in town, he's not a retail developer, he's not a residential developer. So let's make sure we put together a really strong zoning bylaw that gets us, gets what's best for Milton, but let's not zone ourselves out of a good project, because a good developer is going to say, I can't do what I need to do there. So I want to be careful that we're not so rigid that we, that we lose a good opportunity.
Sure, no, I definitely agree. I, I think again, you know, there are a lot of people that, that have very busy lives and, you know, they, they, they catch what they can of the process. And I think that, you know, it would be helpful for as many people as possible to, to reiterate what you put forward, that, that it isn't, you know, the zoning isn't a rendering, it isn't, you know, it isn't, it isn't those specifics, but it's the groundwork for that, so, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion that we...
Go home?
Turn?
Yes, please.
All right, so moved.
All in favor, aye, thank you.